I feel like every Thursday I'm saying something to this effect. Wishing strength and courage for those loved ones of those that have lost their lives in Michigan State the other day. And continuing to go through the recovery in Turkey and Syria from that massive earthquake that happened a few weeks ago. It's just amazing how something so tragic is not anywhere to be seen in any part of the news. And it is still an extreme tragedy. Let's start with Commissioner Vigliotti, what's on your mind?
Thank you very much Commissioner Rothstein. I will do my best to be brief. I've got a couple of things this morning. So I'll let others talk about the community or the College Board of Trustees. I know everybody attended that the other day. I have been out and about speaking with those who are for and against solar development, including visiting where solar development may occur. I very much appreciate the continued input that we've had and having the chance to see some things firsthand on the ground. And on that note, and I know it'll be mentioned again later, that we do have the public hearing coming up on February 23rd at 6:00 PM here in the Reagan Room. Locally, New Windsor is going to be holding a station format town hall on Thursday, February 23rd, at the New Windsor Fire Department at 101 High Street for those interested in or with questions about the ongoing Maryland Route 31 improvements project. Questions are going to be able to be asked and answered that evening, and anybody who lives on Route 31 Main Street or High Street is strongly encouraged to attend. On Monday, I had the chance to visit the future Northwest Regional Park, north of Tonnytown along Route 194, along with Parks and Rec. Director Jeff, or Recreation and Parks Director Jeff Daggett's, Chief of Parks Brad Rogers, and Digital Meteor Manager Chris Swam. Northwest Park is a 145 acre site that was purchased in 2019 using program open space funds, and that's funding that could only be used for the purchasing of parkland. Before this purchase, there were no county-owned parks that existed west of Littlestown Pike and north of Middleburg Road. The future park has 50 acres of existing forest, plenty of rare, flat, open land, and will allow for the environmental protection of a huge part of Piney Creek. Later on this year, we're going to be soliciting proposals for a design firm to develop a master plan for the site. That's going to include public meetings, citizen input, consideration of various amenities, et cetera. And details about these are going to be forthcoming. And as a, as an amusing side note, as you see some of these photos that Mr. Swam had taken, he was operating an aerial drone to do photography. And as he was operating this drone, he was explaining to me that, you know, certain large birds quite frequently attack drones. And about 10 seconds later, a large bird started circling the drone, and Mr. Swam was fortunately able to avoid becoming lunch. So on, so on Wednesday, I had the opportunity to visit the historic courthouse for a tour with the esteemed Judge Brian D. Leonardo, as well as getting a better, more in-depth sense of the operations that go on at that courthouse. You know, one of the really cool things, and you saw a picture there a second ago, was that we have a legal library here in Carroll County. And, you know, it's open to the public, which is really cool. And there are books in there that go back hundreds of years. And, you know, if you consider law order and justice as a central component of what determines civilization, you know, I think we have something quite exceptional in this county and in this country. And of course, you saw in another picture there, Judge D. Leonardo hanging over the side of the bench at the front. It was a good tour, and again, it's open to anybody. And again, the legal library is open to the public. And that is it for me for today. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Mr. Schaefer, feel free to go visit that legal library anytime you'd like. And, but I didn't call you esteemed. No, you don't have any points of order at this point.
You need to sign up to go.
Commissioner Kyler.
Right, right. Yeah.
But it's open, it is open to the public, right.
I appreciate that. You do need to sign up.
You can't just go to the courthouse.
Right, you can't just walk in.
But it is open to the public.
Why did I open up this can? Commissioner Kyler.
I want to mention, I know it's early, but the Second Annual Veterans Celebration at Carroll County will be Sunday, May 7th. And put it on your calendars, a great event. Been attending Mako meetings and Mako virtual meetings, and been trying to do as much as possible of it on Wednesdays in Annapolis, and, and we're getting to meet a bunch of the delegates, a bunch of the senators. It's, it's very positive. Commissioner Vigliotti mentioned the Carroll Community College presentation. It was awesome. And I also attended their Board of Trustees meeting last night. But one of the things I think that impressed me the most, the, the information was good. I love to see stuff like their ranking and, and the impact they have on the communities, et cetera, et cetera. But a lot of people give us tours, a lot of people meet with us. They had every member of the Board of Trustees there, plus one had to be virtual. To me, that's impressive, that, that Board of Trustees are that bought into it, that they take that time that morning to meet us. And, and there were staff there too, and of course, the President of College, but I just thought that was impressive. I toured the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau, Lynn Davis, that was awesome. And it's just amazing, and they're busting out of that building, and they'll probably be busting out of the addition when they build it. And it's just, again, something I mentioned during that tour, when you see the names on the doors of donors, it's, Carroll County's pretty great. And I challenge other counties to have a place where we all work together. And it seems like everybody in Carroll County seems to reach out and work with all the other players. And as far as citizens, you see a lot of the same names that have donated a room or a building or whatever, and, and that's impressive. I met with Jeff Daggett's Wreckin' Parks and talked about stuff going on in my district. And again, that's, that's, that's nice, whatever we can get for recreation and quality of life for the kids and the adults is great. Again, as Commissioner Vigliotti said, I've met with some solar people on both sides of the fence, looked at some properties with both sides of the fence, and it's going to be interesting, and then to hear the public hearing. I'm scheduling some various meetings with some of the fire companies, and they're always interesting. It's, again, in Carroll County, it's tough to get volunteers today, but we seem to be surviving doing it, and, and the hybrid system is going to help it out a lot, but it, it's impressive. And I think I mentioned in an earlier meeting, I'm surprised they have a lot of young volunteers. I just wrote a letter of reference for a young Carroll County person who's been a volunteer since high school and is applying for full-time in Harrod County. But it's, it's a lot of young guys jumping into that. People that's, you know, say the young, young men and women aren't doing that, they, they are jumping into stuff. And then one thing I want to mention, Commissioner Rothstein's mentioned it more than I, but as a contractor all my life, you learn sometimes, there's things, you always think you can do everything yourself better than others, but you learn sometimes that you need to subcontract to specialists. I'm thinking about letting my early comments, I'm thinking about subcontracting to Commissioner Vigliotti and see if he'll pick up my comments too.
Understood.
Thank you.
He is the esteemed, so. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you. First and foremost, wanted to mention that on February 25th, at Westminster High School, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we have the Carroll County History Day, which will include a variety of students that have participated in National History Day contests. This year's topic is Frontiers in History, People, Places, and Ideas. It's a great opportunity for the public to go out and see what many of our students are working on relating to history, as well as interact with displays of local organizations and individuals. I would definitely suggest you take a look at that if you have the time. I'd also like to thank, last week, we had the Carroll County Board of Elections Director Catherine Berry and John Woodley, who's a member of the Board of Elections, and I truly appreciate the hard work that everyone does over at Board of Elections. As the public, we all know, you go and you vote, and you understand the process in some fashion, but I would suggest to anyone, if you have the time, look into what a Board of Elections does for all of us in this community and the county. I would say they are top-notch without question. I know they had mentioned that several of us had, had toured the Board of Elections, and I would strongly recommend that any of, any of our commissioners that have not toured yet, please consider doing so. I'd also like to mention, the City of Westminster just recently received two grants for crosswalks, which is a wonderful situation, given the concerning issues that seem to be happening quite a bit in the municipality with lack of driver awareness and the public. I've heard from a wide array of constituents of various concerns of almost being hit to the public that's driving, please pay attention and look, don't be in a rush, but take a minute. Also, you know, hopefully with these grants and maybe some potential ones, they'll see additional improvements to these crosswalks, and we won't have any injuries or fatalities. Earlier in the week, as mentioned by Commissioner Vigliotti and Commissioner Kyler, the board met with the Community College President Ball and the entire board. I thought it was a very productive meeting discussing the Community College. I thought it was wonderfully open with conversation, and I greatly appreciate their willingness to have positive discussions as we move forward and have conversations with them. It was much appreciated to see that sort of professionalism. Also this week, I met with the ARC and Executive Director Donald Rowell, got a tour over there, was very impressed with all that they do in our community, and truly, they are an asset without question. Also this week, I met with Richard Turner, the County, the Community Media Center's Executive Director, received a tour. I've also been there a number of times in the past, as I think many of my fellow commissioners have. I did learn some very interesting facts, though, that from a technical infrastructure side, our media center, it has infrastructure that no other media center has in the county, so we are above and beyond in that fashion. As we move forward, you know, yearly in our community, obviously communication's a factor, the media center has definitely done a wonderful job in trying to keep the public informed, be it sports, be it news, be it a variety of topics, and I think they're a terrific asset in, in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Karen.
Thank you, I'll try to be brief. I first want to thank the Emergency Services Advisory Council. For people who are not familiar with that organization, it is a, we've got 14 fire stations in the county, 14 chiefs, 14 presidents of corporations, hundreds of volunteers and people working in those stations. And the ESAC is a place where you've got the volunteers represented, the stations, the union, you've got citizen representatives, the fire chief sits in it, and you've got, you've got some amazing people running it in the name of Rick Baker. So I sit on that advisory committee as the commissioner representative, and I just want to thank each and every one of those individuals. We have doc, we have two doctors on the ESAC. It's an extraordinary group of people, and I want to thank them for all the work they're doing, because there's only five of us, and I just mentioned, you know, dozens and dozens of different entities out there, and it allows us to make wise decisions. They truly are focused in just trying to make the best decisions possible, and then bringing them us to as commissioners. And everybody knows what's going on in the county with the transition process taking place. It is anything but simple, but the ESAC is playing such a critical role, and I am so grateful for them, and I'm always looking forward to those meetings. It's been mentioned, we did meet with the Carroll County, the Carroll Community College Board of Trustees on Tuesday morning. It was a fantastic meeting, and they had everybody on deck, so that was really impressive. We have all benefited in some way or form or shape from that Community College, whether we've got kids there, or we've been there, we went there ourselves, or we have friends there, or we're trying to continue education. So it's disheartening, and this is my words, not theirs, but it's disheartening to see that our Community College system in the state is going to, it looks like it's going to be another victim of what I like to refer to as state mandates, the state trying to tell counties and municipalities how to run their own governments. Last week, I mentioned, you know, the new motto for Maryland should be, if you don't like it too bad, because that is increasingly the case. The Community College is one of those entities. We've already got a State Board of Education that's trying to tell our school board how to run their school system, and in the process, interdoing some, introducing some draconian bills about what you should be teaching kindergartners and first graders about sexuality. We've got a Public Health Commission coming down the road to tell our county health department how to run things. It seems like it's never-ending. I know there's a lot of consternation about the upcoming budget for the school system. I'm encouraging parents, take a good look at Maryland Blueprint, and what it's going to mean for our Carroll County public school system. That is coming straight out of Annapolis, and if I had a billion dollars, I may not be able to negate some of the real negative effects of that blueprint coming down the pike. So again, I'll, I'll continue to speak on this, because I think it's a disturbing development. It seems to be happening at ever-increasing pace. We've got a fantastic county here. I mean, we do things right. We're not rich, but we're not, we're not poor. We just find ways to do things right. That's what we're all about. We shouldn't be penalized for it. Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of things. One, last week, I think it was Thursday, the CCA came and saw me, wanted to speak. I think there was like five or six of them. We had a very good candid conversation for about an hour, you know, talking about budget, talking about, you know, their priorities, ours. And, you know, the, the key takeaway from me to them was continue to communicate, continue to be a part of the process, you know. Same thing with CCPS and the Board of Education as we move forward. It's not our budget, the five of us up here, it's not the government budget, it's the Carroll County budget, and we've got to commit ourselves to that. When I say budget, it's also resources, time, people, and money. And the second thing I just want to share, especially when it comes to people and time, and that's highlighting the sheriff and his department. Yesterday was the School Resource Officer Recognition Day, I believe. Again, like Commissioner Garen said, nobody does it better than us. And I, I've shared with other jurisdictions how they use their SROs and how they're seen, and it is so just uplifting when I can walk into a, a school and see an officer, a man or woman, in, in blue, and standing straight up, and, you know, being, you know, the, the center of attention for so many students, because they want to be around them, as opposed to somebody in khakis and a polo shirt. That's not how we should present ourselves. So, you know, Sheriff, just thank you for all you do and your team, especially with the SROs and recognition. And also, the work you did and your department last week in a very difficult situation, where it took a region, you know, to take care of some nefarious issues. You know, bad people don't know boundaries. And the good part is that our sheriff, along with, I believe, the police forces in the region, have a wonderful way of collaborating that is seamless, that is using their tactics and techniques to ensure the safety and security of our community, and to bring bad people to, to justice, and allowing us to know what goes on the whole time. So thank you. And then, and it also goes for the men and women, you know, in red, and as we move forward with our fire EMS, you know. When I ran the installation, 80% of my fire calls were outside the fence line, so it's all about that mutual aid. It's all about that, that partnership. And Sheriff, you and your team have shown that partnership in the region, makes us feel safe and secure. You have shown that partnership with the schools, with the SROs, and, you know, just want to, to recognize that. So with that said, and I know you're going to want to say a few words about this, but let me, let me pause that for a second. Let's get our legislative issues done, and then bring you up for a couple of issues, if that's okay. Okay. Mike?
Morning.
Commissioner Garen, if you think it's bad from where you sit, come with me one day.
That's why we have you, Mike.
I'll tell ya. It's amazing. Well, good morning, good morning. So, we are just a little over a month from crossover, that's the next big date. So, the, the work on, on bills in committee has really kind of just begun. There haven't been many bills passed of any consequence, they've all been more or less technical, state-related issues, sunset reviews, that kind of thing. So we're going to be getting into some serious stuff here very quickly. So the governor's agenda has been put forward, his bills, you know, his, his agenda was attacking child poverty and supporting veterans, creating a program of service, so those bills have been introduced. Also, his appointments have been made. I think just about everybody now has been pushed through the Senate. I think there was some little controversy with the Juvenile Justice Commissioner or Director, but that, that has passed through as well. So he has all of his people, or will have all of his people in place very shortly. As far as the bills that, that are directly related to us, the Public Facilities Bond, while that is a formality, frankly, we still keep a close eye on it because of how critical it is. So it, it did get out of budget tax yesterday on the Senate side, and the House will hear that on the 21st. And then the bill that, that we put forward late on purchasing, increasing the purchasing limit, that actually has been dropped, it's Senate Bill 897. It will require a delegation meeting to put it forward, but it sounds like they'll be fine with doing that. We, we will have to put an amendment in to change the, the title of the procurement officer, so that's not that big of a deal. A little bit of good news here and there. So the bill, Senate Bill 225, that would have required PFAS monitoring in, in wastewater treatment, has been withdrawn, and, and I think that was kind of doomed from the start, a lot of technical issues. I think the methodology isn't even approved yet by the EPA. So that, along with, we have a new Secretary of MDE, so I think we'll see that come back in some form next year, but it's off the table for, for now. A little bit of action on the Northeast Maryland Waste Supposal Authority dissolution. So that was in Subcommittee. It's in the Environment and Transportation Committee in the House, the Environment Subcommittee looked at that yesterday. The sponsor had offered a few amendments. We're glad we got a little bit of our concerns addressed. So one, that we didn't address specifically, but it included the Maryland Clean Energy Center in, in the analysis and transition, and that's really not appropriate, so that's been moved. One amendment did insert maintaining stakeholder engagement throughout the process, that was something we thought was important. And another one, and, and I've asked for a copy of the actual amendments, because the, the Subcommittee meeting was on Zoom, and so you, all you know is what you hear, you don't get to see anything actually. So it sounded like they're going to require the MES to temporarily assume all the functions, employees, and active contracts during the analysis, and then to maintain the assumption of those. So it sounds to me like what we suggested is, if they do this, they should bring everything from, from the authority into MES intact. And it sounds like that's what's being proposed, but when I get those actual amendments and, and drill down, I'll, I'll let you know if that is in fact the case. Just a couple of quick bills in the education, Senate Bill 881. So retention has been an issue across, you know, just about every workforce. There was, there's a program to provide bonuses to childcare providers that would have ended as of fiscal year '23, so this bill would extend it another additional two years, which hopefully will help with retention there. And then, House Bill 849, which the Legislative Committee, Mako Legislative Committee considered yesterday, would change the way enforcement is done on school buses. So, you know, the sacrosanct aspect of not passing a school bus with flashing red lights, currently, there are fines associated with, with citations there, and this bill would have removed the fines from the first and second violations. Most of the people felt that that was probably inappropriate, that really the point is to prevent these things from occurring beyond, beyond the, the first infraction. So, so the Legislative Committee voted to oppose that.
And, and this is one of the things, it's so depressing down there. I thought at first, this was a, a county, one of the county's local bills for them, and that's bad enough, but it's statewide, correct?
Correct.
And I won't say the county, it obviously wasn't Carroll, the same county that wants so much to make sure you guys in uniform are properly punished if you blow your nose in the wrong place, think somebody that commits a crime should only get a warning. I just, I don't understand the logic. I, I truly don't.
Yeah, it was challenging.
There was a, a lot of sentiment in that regard.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, it was a very interesting proposition, frankly. And you mentioned Catherine Berry here last week, and we're very fortunate that she is also the legislative liaison for the, the Boards of Elections around the state. So she provided me with a number of bills that she believes would have an impact on Carroll County. She believes that they are probably not going to pass in their current construction, but we're still going to keep an eye on them. So just quickly, House Bill 95 requires some written and oral instructions for election judges to assist the elderly or disabled. It's very prescriptive, all the way down to the size of the signs and the language in the signs. That's, that's going to be a challenge, there's obviously fiscal impact there. Senate Bill 39, affiliation. So right now, you can't, if you're unaffiliated, you can't affiliate with a party beyond, after registration closes. So I think it's 30 days before the primary. Well, this bill would now allow you to change affiliation up to the day before the election. Obviously, creates a lot of challenges for them. They've got a lot on their plate, and they keep getting their plate loaded up. House Bill 22 has to do with signature requirements on absentee ballots, would disallow the counting of an absentee ballot lacking a signature, and it requires the board to check each signature, cross-check it with, with registration records. And then House Bill 35 is, again, voter ID, which is not going to pass. The legislatures just seem to be dead set against that. It doesn't, it doesn't require ID, it just adds government-issued ID as another way to check. It, it leaves in place asking someone their, I think their birthday and their address, but it also adds that as another aspect, but I don't see that moving forward at all. House Bill 41, curbside voting. Apparently, there are over 20 states that allow curbside voting, so essentially, it's, it's really for disabled people and, and pregnant women, pregnant people, depending on your perspective. You can laugh at that.
But then they're too long.
You gotta come back, Mike.
Keep, keep going.
It's terrible, isn't it?
Just keep going.
You have to adopt the language. So this is interesting, because there's no check for this. You, the user's, you know, you self-identify as a disabled person, and so it requires the, the board to set up some process where people can notify in advance that they'll be coming, and someone has to get to them relatively quickly and assist them with voting. You can see how challenging that would be. And this has to be done at each early voting center, and then for the general election, it would have to be done at one location. And then, the last one, Senate Bill 339, has to do with recounts. I think the local board has to take some actions that, again, are challenging to them and will have an impact. So, I'll be following those pretty closely with her, make sure that we're covered there. And then, lastly, Senate Bill 45, I think the sheriff would probably be happy to see this. This bill would've, would've established a wide range of sort of protected classes on inmates, and then prescribed separate housing for them. And you can see the challenge, particularly for the smaller rural counties that have smaller facilities, that that's just a real, real challenge to provide this kinda separate housing. So, that's been withdrawn by the sponsor. And Senate Bill 650, this one, we're glad to see. Our emergency management people and public works people are very happy to see it. It provides funding for local governments and citizens when there is a disaster declared, but it applies when the state declares it, but when it's not a federal declaration. So, that will be funded with $20 million at the start of each fiscal year. So, that's, I think, something we can be happy about. And again, I provided you with the list of bills that the Legislative Committee looked at yesterday, and some of these, most of these positions go through as they are, but from time to time, some of these get changed after the discussions. So, I haven't indicated, I think, at least one or two of these probably changed before they went through.
A question that, that obviously I don't understand, but I think everybody might like to hear. At some point in time, with most of these bills, they come out with what the real cost is.
Yes.
What's the timing of that? Is that, you know, when does that happen? And that, what made me think of it, that changes sometimes the stance on something when you see who's paying for it and how much.
Right. The fiscal, the fiscal notes will typically come out as quickly as they can. When the DLS sends out to various counties, they don't send it out to every county, but they'll send out to various counties to get the information on the bill back, and then they include it in a formal fiscal note. They get attached on the website as soon as they're available, so we can get in there and see what. Now, they won't be down to the county level. They'll be state government, private business, and local government, so you'll see what it costs the local governments collectively. But the committee will always have the fiscal note when they're hearing the bill. So, I can provide you fiscal notes as they're available for any bill that you're interested in, and actually, we can, I can add these as they're available to the ones that I bring to you, sure.
And I think, maybe not everyone, but the ones that are more significant.
The significant ones, right, right. There are some big ones, no question.
Okay. Any other comments? Good question.
Thank you very much, Mike. Again, you know, if you're, if you're somebody who's concerned with election integrity, you probably need to be paying attention to some of these election bills, but particularly, HB 114, HB 35 and 41, I mean, if you had to handicap those, I would, I'm willing to guess they probably pass? Is that what I guess?
35, probably not.
Well, yeah, 35, no. That one's DLS.
Right. 41, I'm not so sure. The curbside voting? Yeah, I'm not so sure about that. But that, I'm gonna keep an eye on that, because that's really a challenge.
Yeah, I don't know how we're supposed to.
Yeah, I mean, you heard from her last week, and you know the kinda challenges
Massive resource issue.
They just keep piling it on and piling up every year. It's, how did we ever conduct elections in one day?
We should.
It's amazing.
Start to finish.
But, you know, in point of personal privilege, on this curbside voting, I mean, that's, that's why absentee voting was expanded to the extent it has been. I don't know. What, are we gonna go to everybody's house now and collect the ballot?
I don't disagree with you.
Don't say that out loud.
No, no.
Okay. What else?
That's all I have for you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sheriff, why don't you come on up here, and let's talk about Cortico Health and Wellness app, and if you'd like to visit with a couple of comments.
So, Lieutenant Phil Lawrence is here. So, Phil oversees the Safe Schools Unit for me, so he's the commander of it. Phil's got two very important jobs. He's also my SWAT team commander, and you mentioned that there were some things regionally that happened last week. Phil was sent over to Baltimore County with his team, which a number of them are actually SROs, so we were then having to back Phil, our SROs, because they would have to come out of the schools and run with Phil East. Two Baltimore County police officers were shot. The first was shot during a call that a father had called in saying his son was suicidal, and the officers got into the house and random shots rang out. One of the officers was hit. He has since been released, and that began a massive search for the suspect, and he was on the loose from that point. We have such a wonderful relationship with Baltimore County and the region, police departments, when things like this happen, it takes literally an army to come help them, and so, we're one of the first calls Baltimore County makes, asks for our team to come down and assist with searching for that individual. So, Phil takes the team down there, and as you know, several hours later, and into the next day, another police officer was shot. How he survived, I don't know. He is still in very bad shape, but it does appear as though he will survive. That incident then took off from there and went up into Hartford County, where the individual was, was stop-sticked by Hartford County Sheriff's Office. They did a wonderful job with a number of teams to pin that fellow down and take him into custody without any shots being fired when, when what took place earlier was remarkable. So, Phil really does a great job for me. He's got two big responsibilities, the schools and our SWAT team, and last week, he really got worked over, because we had an incident at Northwest Middle, albeit it wasn't on the campus, but if you'd've fallen down, you'd've hit the campus when this incident happened. And you're right, the school resource officers do a wonderful job, and I wanna recognize them. They're not here. It's school today, so they gotta be in the schools. Phil's the only one I could pull out of the schools, but they do a wonderful job. Sergeant Sneddon's over at Gateway. Corporal Jeremy Holland is over at the Tech Center. Corporal Rex Scott's over at East Middle, and as I walk around the county, Paul Cox is up at Northwest. Clint Cromwell is over at Francis Guy Key High School. When you go to the northern part of the county, Kyle Barget's over at Manchester Valley, very popular guy at Manchester. Clint Cromwell's more popular than Barget, he says. Cromwell's a graduate of FSK and is now back there. As you come to the center part of the county, Shanita Blackwell's at Winters Mill. Pete Dragusor is over at Westminster High. Again, Rex is at East Middle. As you go to the southern part of the county, John Welty is over at Oklahoma Road Middle School. Jessica Snyder, who is actually the face of our organization right now, you see her on the billboards as you navigate around the county, is at Liberty High School. As you go a little further west, Kyle Merson's over at South Carroll High School, and helping down south is Brian Puff. He's down at that boundary and helps service those schools.
And Sentry.
Ah, Damont. How could I forget Damont? Damont, he owns Sentry High School. Damont Harvey is at Sentry High School, and I can throw his face out every month and get thousands of comments on him. He is such a good, good guy, and they all do just spectacular work, and I think the comment was that they do more than just protect the lives of the kids there, and that's their primary responsibility, don't get me wrong, but they are really a part of the fabric of each school that they, that they go to and work out of, and do just absolutely remarkable work. And we make sure that we put the right people at the right school based on the personality of the deputy, the personality of the school. And I will mention that Scott Lavender's the principal out at Northwest, and when that incident happened out there, Paul Cox happened to be on the campus when it happened. It was at dismissal, and so, they did a wonderful job. They absolutely did a wonderful job. The students were actually leaving the school. The pathway that would, that the majority, I think Scott tells me that there's about 200 kids that walk to that school. They would have been going out towards East Baltimore Street on that path, and a clear sight from the school. Any, it could've gone really, really bad, but they did a wonderful job throwing all their protocols into place and getting the kids back on, onto the property and into the buses. And one of the bus patrol things that we'll discuss after Cortico kinda came into play in this particular incident, some of the technology that Bus Patrol provided us came into play, and I've got Mike Hardesty here from Carroll County Public Schools, and we'll explain how that, that really worked out for us with knowing where our buses were and being able to communicate when an incident like that took off.
I'll tell ya, it's great, this is what needs to be in the paper. This is the information that needs to be shared, the ability to collaborate, the ability to fund appropriately, the ability to, to work seamlessly, you know, within the community. We say it, nobody knows Carroll County better than Carroll Countyans, and that's what this is all about. So, just, and I'm gonna open up for my colleagues, but Lieutenant, let me give you a coin on behalf of your SROs, so.
Let me say this. You guys didn't wait, by the way, for legislation to take place in order to fund the SROs. The previous board funded SROs regardless of what was coming out of the state, so you guys were at the forefront of putting these men and women, and a very diverse group of men and women in our, in our schools. So, you didn't, you didn't mess around with it, which was, which was a good idea. And then, you also mentioned, we look like this every day when we go in. We don't dress down.
Yeah.
When, when something happens like Northwest Middle, we've gotta be ready to fight, and we've gotta have the tools that are needed to fight and protect the students and stay up at each school, and I will not allow them to wear anything other than what I'm wearing and what Phil has on and what the deputies wear in and out of the schools. Dressing down to look softer doesn't wash with me at all. I won't have that.
I agree. Anyone?
And I think that's, that's so great, because we've got so many kids getting very comfortable with somebody in full uniform, and I think that's a giant step for these kids. But then, the turn side of that, which we've seen a little bit at carnivals, at other events, when an SRO's out in the community in plainclothes, kids recognize him or her and run up to him and talk to him. It's impressive.
I was walking around with Deputy Harvey, I think, last year, and he literally walks down the hallways like this, and even the teachers come out and high-five him, and a girl walked up to us, and she saw me in the uniform, and the stars and the bars, and that means nothing to them, and the girl says, "Is Harvey one of your deputies? Does, do you work for Harvey?" And I thought, "Well, you know what? Yeah, I kinda do. Yeah, I do." So, he's the sheriff of Sentry High.
Yeah, I think the other important part of it, too, going off of what Commissioner Kyler has said and what Commissioner Rothstein has said, is that, you know, long before I was in this position, I was hearing positive things about the SRO program, nothing but positive things. And, you know, in addition to getting, you know, kids used to authority, getting them used to dealing with law enforcement, right, in a very positive way, you know, it helps to change a sociocultural reality. I mean, we're dealing with such a disgusting anti-police mentality nationally right now, and so, anywhere that we are able to do good and to back law enforcement is incredibly important, and I certainly am going to continue to support the SRO program. Because, again, you know, you're changing hearts and minds, and you really are creating the groundswell conditions for a change about a national mentality, and I cannot thank you guys enough for doing that.
Appreciate it.
And, and one last comment. You initiated it well before you had to, and that's super, but as nationwide tragedies or other things happen that you think a change is warranted, that happens so quickly, and, you know, the program's always adjusting, and it's a great program. It doesn't have to adjust much, but when necessary, you take care of it.
We do, and we've seen that, and I rely on Phil. I rely on Curtis Pierce from the school security side to help us with making those adjustments and issues that may be going out, going on at a particular school that may need more attention by us, and that, that process has worked.
And the other part of it, too, is just knowing that there is someone in the schools who will be able to protect the students immediately. God forbid something ever happens.
Okay. Anything else?
I just wanna make the comment along with the fellow commissioners. Thank you all for what you do in law enforcement. I know some days it's not as appreciated by some, but we all greatly appreciate it. I will share one little fun tidbit from a couple of years ago, to the sheriff's point, you know, you all are in uniform. Had a dear friend that her young son at the time was very enamored with law enforcement, very young, young age, and there was a deputy someplace, and it was near the house, so he, you know, just happened to be in the area. It was nothing going on, but a young man had to go in his, in the house and get his hat and his badge, 'cause he wanted to go out and talk to the deputy. So, I know there's days that you have people that are less than pleasant to deal with, but I can tell you, there's definitely youth that looks up to you and appreciates all that you do, so I just wanna say thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
And I have a, Maureen's here. I have an agenda item before we get into a presentation.
Cortico Health.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Back to work.
I suppose.
Okay. The Board previously approved grant funding for the Carroll County Sheriff's Office to pay Cortico Incorporated to provide a customized mobile health and wellness app for the agency. This program began in 2021, and we are now requesting your approval to renew the annual subscription cost of $30,000. The subscription fee covers the licensing, the maintenance, and the ongoing updates, and the unlimited use by Carroll County Sheriff's Office personnel. This amount is covered by an awarded grant and has been approved by the Budget Office, and no additional funds should be necessary, and I'll turn it over to the Sheriff's and Vicky if you have any questions.
So, you guys approved this last year, and it is an app that's on all of the deputies' phones, including mine, and they have access to the app, and it does, goes the gamut of resources for wellness, to tips, to, down to clergy, if that's what's needed, other resources on the app, so we've found a lot of benefits from, from that particular app, and it is a grant-funded program.
Okay. Is there any value in doing multi-year, or no? You can't?
I don't know that they offer.
I don't think we can. I think that's something that comes out of.
I believe I have asked in the past. I will definitely check again. I think in the past, the reason is, it has moved between different grants. With any grant, they never know, but I can tell you, the grant that it is in now, there is supposed to be additional funding for the next few years, so that may be an opportunity to now go back and ask.
Just check into it.
Absolutely. We did initially, but.
Save a dollar, that's a good thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Is this, is it scalable if at some point we decided, do you want it to extend its use to firefighter EMS, or is it even applicable, or is it more designed for law enforcement?
It's a good question.
I would say there would be additional items to add. I would say in a public safety concept, because of mental health and wellness, it is designed, I'm sure, for some of the features for law enforcement, but it obviously overlaps. We'd have to see, I.
That's something we could explore, Commissioner. I don't think that's a bad idea. As the fire department gets bigger and broader, they're gonna use the same resources in a lot of ways that we are crossing over, so it's a good question. It's something we never even thought about, but.
I would appreciate, I would appreciate that. I think we all, yeah, that'd be, thank you for that offer.
Okay. Sure, motion?
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the annual subscription cost of $30,000 to Cortico, Inc., to maintain the health and wellness law enforcement app for the Sheriff's Office.
Second? Okay. Any discussion on this one? Seen here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's talk about a bus patrol program.
Phil, if you wanna come up, Mr. Hardesty?
Thanks, Maureen.
If you're okay.
Thank you.
Chris, do I have access to?
Should.
I do. Okay. Running that for me, Phil?
Sure.
So, I got a request about a month ago to go over the bus patrol program. I created a PowerPoint presentation that Lieutenant Lawrence will walk through. Lieutenant Lawrence oversees that. Sergeant Russ Toranjos here. He's got all the details, because he primarily, with his group, are looking at the citations that come in daily and has a lot of the intricacies. And then, of course, Mike Hardesty is the Director of Transportation for Carroll County Public Schools. So, any question that needs to be answered, I think we'll, we'll be able to get it answered. So, the first slide's the law. And we put out an awful lot annually when it comes to public service announcements with, "This is the law when you come up on a school bus," and so, we try and target it, obviously, in August, and around the time that folks know that buses are gonna come back out on the road, and I'll do. that folks know that buses are going to come back out on the road. And I'll do public service announcements on TV, cable TV, the radio, whatever whatever is possible in order to make sure people understand what their responsibility is when they come up on a bus. With that being said, and I don't want to be brutal about this, but it is not my responsibility to teach people how to drive. It is the responsibility of the person driving that vehicle to understand what the law is when they come up on a stop sign or or a big yellow bus. That is taught very early, and it's something when in doubt, you should stop. And so there's the transportation article that deals with it. The biggest issue always tends to be a divided highway or roadway that has a median strip. A good example would be Route 26 in Eldersburg. It's got a it's got a it's divided in the center there for a turn lane, but it doesn't have an actual barrier like a Jersey wall. And that always seems to be ambiguous for people. Should I stop? Should I not stop? And so we try and put as much education as we can when it comes to the law out there. But at the end of the day, it's responsibility of the person driving the vehicle. And I'll show you an example of something like this as we as we go along. I'll show you a video where that takes place. So the contract itself, kind of the way it came about, the Board of Education approached me. They wanted to go to this system or a system that was like it. In order for the entire system to be put into the to the buses, there needed to be cooperation between law enforcement, Carroll County Public Schools, and then, of course, the Board of Commissioners. So we went in, we entered into a contract, Carroll County Public Schools did, in June of 2020. And the first violation for the bus arms started September 1, 2020. And so Bus Patrol, at no cost to Carroll County at all, to the public school system or to the Board of Commissioners, outfitted every single bus in the Board of Education's fleet with this technology. When Mike and I were starting to look at it at this, and I think Mr. Guthrie was on board then, there was there were companies that were coming in that wanted to do a sampling of school buses. They wanted to do 50 or 75 buses. And really, it wasn't adequate for us. So we didn't want to do anything that didn't have every single bus outfitted. And there was a reason for that, because the technology on that bus isn't just for the stop arm systems. There's other things that Mr. Hardesty and his staff, including mine, benefit from. And I'll explain that as we as we move on. So 307 buses are currently equipped with the technology. And that fluctuates annually according to what Mr. Hardesty and his staff needs out there. So there's a number of cameras on there and multiple cameras. The most noticeable camera would be the one that runs along the driver's side that kind of kind of runs the contour of the bus. And those are the primary cameras that pick up the school bus violation. It also has GPS system for fleet tracking. And then there's FirstNet wireless communications. It's a platform so that they have two-way communications. And the reason I say that that was that is probably as beneficial as any part of this entire system is because last week, Mr. Hardesty is able to communicate immediately with the buses that are going to Northwest, whether to divert them and keep them away from the school through two-way communication or through the GPS system, or to get them to the school faster so that we can evacuate it and move them to another location, or he could divert other buses to Northwest Middle so that we could get take them to a staging location if buses couldn't get on the compound. The system is just really remarkable and the ability to be to communicate. Previously, there could be an incident that takes place out on the streets in Carroll County with a bus, and the ability to find that bus could be could be challenging. Now we know exactly where the bus is, and we can respond to any incident that may takes place on the bus. It could also be a weather event, and Mr. Hardesty can relocate those buses based on the GPS locations and the two-way communications with the bus. So there's a lot of value in the total package of the equipment. But in order for the stop arms to be a part of the system, you have to have the total package within within the system. It's a five-year contract. So this is the this is the, I guess, the money piece of it. So we didn't pay any money to outfit any of these buses. And we don't pay any money for monthly fees for technology fees. So the equipment's one thing that went into these buses. And then the technology fees of cloud-based storage, of folks reviewing citations on their end, the technology for GPS locations, everything that goes into that bus costs about $138,000 monthly. And you can do the math. Mike and I looked at it. It's about eight and a half million dollars in technology for a five-year period. It's not cheap. So the initial cost of the technology that went into the bus, and then the the monitoring fees and all the fees that go associated with managing that technology costs about $130,000 a month for all the buses in the fleet. So kind of, I'll give you the enforcement statistics. We launched this in 2020 during the pandemic, and nobody could have predicted. And it was not the best time. But nonetheless, it was launched during that time. 152 citations were issued in 2020. And then you can see the numbers as they go up in 2021, and now in 2022, 7,215. So when we look at the enforcement statistics and start looking at violations, at the end of 2022, the Sheriff's Office has viewed 12,900 violations with an overall rating of 72.9%. So we do not approve every citation that comes through here. Bus Patrol sends us what the law says is a violation. It is our responsibility and my staff's responsibility to go through each individual citation and make a determination whether that was a legitimate violation in order to process. If we sign off on that, and we have 10 days, I think in another slide, it'll say we have 10 days from the time that that citation shows up in our system to approve or disapprove the citation. If we approve it, then Bus Patrol sends that citation so that it gets a district court hearing, if that's what they choose. But it then sends the citation to the owner of the vehicle, not the particular driver. It's a civil violation. So 72.9%. And as we started talking about this, Lieutenant Lawrence and I started looking around what the other counties that have Bus Patrol or systems like this. And we're pretty consistent with the other counties when it comes to the approval rate or disapproval rate of citations. We run we run pretty close to what goes on regionally. Less than 3% repeat offenders. So there's a lot of is this working? Are we changing driving behaviors? So the recidivism rate for folks that are being stopped in this county is less than 3%. What we do see from time to time are, for example, enterprise rental cars, vehicles that are that are being leased where a liability would have to be transferred. So we do see a number of them where people think that they're exalted their responsibility because they're in a rental vehicle, and they're not. And they sign lease agreements that say, if you don't pay the citation, then we're just going to charge your credit card. So those are some things that are a little quirky to come through. But Bus Patrol is pretty good at figuring those out, and we can gather statistics on on those issues. And that's just another another slide on enforcement. So we this is legislated. There was friendly legislation that needed to be to be applied for and sought before this program took place. Legislation allows us to set fines. In this case, we set the fine to $250. We could have set it to $500, I believe, or somewhere to in that realm. And just so you understand, this is a civil violation that has no points attached to it. If one of my deputies were witnessing the same violation, it would be $520 and three points assessed to the driver of the vehicle themselves. So there's a significant difference in in the the amount of money and the fines. When an individual, when we process it, and an individual gets a citation, this is what they get. And then there is the ability to view real-time video, not real-time, but video, of the actual infraction. So they can go on and see exactly what they did, or who was in the vehicle at the time, and track it down. But they give several different images, still still photos, and then video of the actual violation itself. And then this is a this is over on John Street. Upper left is the yellow lights. They've been on for a while. Upper left is the red lights. They come on immediately, stop, sign out. Kids are coming on, and that vehicle comes straight through. That is a typical violation that we see regularly. I'll show it to you again. The reason that the the upper left hand really helps us out, because I can tell you when the bus driver initiates the yellow lights to start warning people. And then the bus driver stops, signs come out, and then and then that is just an obvious clear violation, and that's what we see more than not. That's what we see. The the stop arms that come out, the stop signs that come out to the side of the bus, that's not that's not what the transportation article talks about. The transportation article talks about the the red lights that are coming on the front and the back of the bus. They come on instantly once the the driver throws them on. The stop arms are hydraulic, and they take the stop sign itself is hydraulic, and that takes a second to get out. Sometimes we get people that will argue, well, the stop sign wasn't completely out. We can see exactly where you're at when that when those red lights come on and how long the caution lights were on. And Mike and his staff do a wonderful job within service, educating school bus drivers on on exactly what they should be doing. There's a lot of people that'll come in and say, well, the bus driver was waving me on. And that does happen periodically. If that does happen, it should be done under caution, not not red light. Because once the red lights come on and something passes it, it's it's clicking, and it's writing, it's sending citations to us. So we do work with Mike and his staff regularly and the school bus drivers to make sure that they understand how the system works. He has new bus drivers every year that he's got to go through, not unlike I've got new police officers that I've got to to train and and get better. But we work closely and understand the citations that are coming through to make sure that we're not sending over citations to the court system that we don't believe are are citations that can be can be won in court. We do have a number of folks that go to court. Of the amount of citations that I sent, I told you, about 4% of the violators request court. 138 of those paid before they even got to court. And then the overwhelming majority were found guilty. And 25 violators were found not guilty. And we learned that early on. Specifically, there's two district court judges periodically. There's visiting judges that come in and out of the courthouses. But Judge Lewis and Judge Danz primarily see these citations. And a lot of it is learning what is acceptable to them when it comes to what they believe is is an obvious infraction or an obvious violation of the law. And so working through the district courts and understanding that and being able to supply them with the exact video. And then 10 were a transfer liability, which was the leased court, the leased companies. And here's here's just another statistical data. They can vary the violations. They don't have to go with our 250. If you if you just pay the violation out before you go to court, that's one thing. They can increase it if they choose to. Sometimes they do based on the video that they see. And it causes them to do a little higher citation fee. And then the last is just another overview of the technology, what we're paying annually. And I will tell you that there is a $1.85 million deficit right now in the technology fee that we will never catch up with. And you scratch your head at that. And here's the reason. We don't write or approve enough citations for it to keep up with the the technology fee. Again, the amount of equipment that was installed and then the then the monthly fees in order to maintain that equipment and the technology, we just simply aren't keeping up with that. And and that's a Mike Hardesty, Cindy McCabe issue that they are working with with my staff on. But this is a valuable, valuable system. And so we feel that that it needs to be there. The Bus Patrol is working with us on that on that technology fee. One of the questions I get often is, do I have the staff to do this? We we Phil, my staff that's behind me, look at student safety from door to door, from the time they get on a bus, and maybe even standing outside at a bus stop while they're in school. And from the time we drop them back off at their home, this this Bus Patrol plays a key role in making sure that there's a lot of safety, getting them back and forth. And then the SROs play a key role once they get there. So we were willing to take on the burden the second that it happened, knowing that that we would not be compensated so early in the in the project. So kind of the way it works is that if the technology fee, the $138,000 a month was met, anything over that $138,000 would then have a profit sharing to it. 60, 40 profit sharing, I think 60, our office, 40, Bus Patrol, Board of Education got nothing. But that that fee has not been met. So we we aren't even close to that. So this was never about making money, ever. I knew we weren't going to make money. I knew the return on the investment wasn't going to be immediate, or probably even the time that I was sheriff. But it didn't matter to us. We wanted to make sure that we we were 360 when it came to student safety. And this plays a key role in that. One last, for instance, we use Bus Patrol in the northern part of the county. I think it was back around Thanksgiving a few years ago, when we had a pipe bomb that was mailed to an individual's house. Believe it or not, Bus Patrol and a school bus picked up one one of the multi-cameras that they have, that vehicle leaving leaving the area. So we do use, and we will call Mike's crew and Curtis to see if there's video footage that we can use, that that it may be around the bus, not necessarily involving the bus, that help us solve crime. So overall, we we like the system. The the issue is going to be for Mr. Hardesty and Cindy to to figure out the contractual part of it. But we want it. We like it. We're capable of handling the the work that comes in. I don't need any more resources to do it. And if there's some profit at the end of it, great. We've already said it. There's profit that comes to my office that'll be used for school safety.
I'm not used to hearing that. I don't need any more resources to do it. I'm just no, let me.
I've already got your wallet. I got that before you even sat down.
Just want to let that sink in. Wow.
Just play that as a continuity.
That is a first.
I'll be in next week. So just clear your mind.
I don't need any more resources. Okay. Thank you so much for the for the briefing. Any comments, questions?
I'd like to make a comment, a couple of comments. One, I loved all the percentages. I was wondering about how many try to go to court. Again, this makes it more idiotic that somebody thinks they should get a warning first time when when you see the levels that this goes through before somebody gets a fine. The other thing I wanted to mention, and you alluded to it a little bit, but another group that's been cooperating throughout this entire process has been the bus contractors and the drivers. This this meant early on, equipment had to be installed in their buses. And, you know, they needed training, and everybody worked together to make that happen. And it's, you know, I look at it, you know, if the county came to me and said, oh, we need to install this on your dash because you're a commissioner, I'd throw a fit. And, you know, everybody worked together.
You throw a fit?
Never, never. But they all worked together. And I'm sure there was some pushback, and sure there were some training issues. But they've cooperated in this, too. And I think I think they're seeing now the benefit to it.
I mean, Mike organized all this, and we used the Ag Center to run everything through. So please.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Yeah, we're we're very pleased with the overall Bus Patrol contract. Obviously, there's some things to work out with the technology fees. And one of the things that really hurt us in terms of what we owe them still, according to the contract. But I should make the point, we really don't owe them anything. At the end of the contract, we are free and cleared to walk away without owing them anything, despite, you know, what we what we see as a technology deficit right now. But we lost a whole year. The contract was initiated in June of 2020, and we lost a whole year with COVID and schools not not starting as as normal. And even into the 21 year, we didn't see the number of motorists on the road that you would normally see.
But even while those buses were parked during that year, we were still racking up the technology fee. But even while those buses were parked during that year, we were still racking up the technology fee. They, they, they.
Yes, right. So, so we are, um, bus patrol is very interested in, in renegotiating the terms and, and we are too. So we have a meeting with them actually next week, which might give us a better opportunity, uh, for some revenue share, even though as, as Sheriff Dewey said, we didn't get into this looking for any money. The school system never wanted any money in this. But I want to make sure that the sheriff is taken care of for his administrative costs in some fashion. Obviously the whole program from bus patrol standpoint or our standpoint hinges on the sheriff and their, their, uh, their work with this and making sure that, uh, the tickets are prosecuted. You know, prior to, uh, the bus patrol agreement, we participated every year for about a twelve-year period, uh, statewide with a one-day snapshot of violations, of stop arm violations. And, and our average, as reported by bus drivers, was about ninety-two on that one day. Look at things and across the state and across the country, it's a tremendous problem with, uh, motorists violating the law. So we knew it was a serious problem. And, uh, so bus patrol, you know, assures us that wherever buses go, and we have nine thousand bus stops roughly every day. Um, so, you know, we're assured that these cameras are on every single bus. And we have the technology that we need for safety and security purposes with live GPS and, uh, in, interior cameras. And our push-to-talk communication devices, as Sheriff Dewey said, are just, just such an improvement over what we had, which was a hodgepodge of cell phones. So we can get a message out to the entire fleet or any portion of the fleet. Any type of emergency that arises, as Sheriff Dewey said with Northwest Middle last week, was invaluable to have that technology.
There are times, um, we talked about this this morning, where we notice, um, maybe bus stops or intersections that may be a high frequency and, um, just an unusual on-ramp or off-ramp. And, and so Phil or the guys will communicate with Mike and, and they'll evaluate a particular stop. If it, if it can be moved, it is. If it can't be, then that's just, that's just how it is. But we notice and communicate back and forth with Mike and the staff and bus patrol on some of those issues. So it isn't, this, it's hard and fast. This is how it is. It's, it's a system that we, we talk about regularly and try and massage if we need to.
And, and you mentioned all the cameras and I don't know how much, sometimes with security, you don't want to bare your soul to the world. But how valuable are the cameras inside the bus?
Extremely valuable, Commissioner. Um, almost every day, at least one school is requesting video based upon something that happened on the bus. So, um, you know, it, it, it's a tremendous, tremendous amount of requests that come in for interior camera video.
And I think you, you, you're asking a question because it's, you know, the answer and they're, they're extremely valuable. There, there's things that, that substantiate and there's things that exonerate, um, allegations that take place. And so the video inside of those, those buses are extremely, extremely valuable.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments, thoughts?
Can I ask you a quick question? Uh, just curious. I saw this exact same thing on, um, Route twenty-six just a couple of weeks ago. So the bus was stopped picking up children on the north side of twenty-six. It was going westbound. And, um, and I was a couple of cars behind it and, um, a car just, um, pulled out from, uh, in front of me and went into the, um.
Suicide lane.
Suicide lane and, uh, went around them. Now, he was, he or she was two or three lanes away. I'm just curious, would the cameras actually pick that up?
It does.
Well enough to identify. Good.
Add the video to it. Yeah. And that is, we talked about twenty-six this morning. I mean, there's not that many four-lane roads in the county. So it's pretty, one forty, um, once you get, uh, west of, of, you know, Westminster is, is two-lane. But one forty has a barrier and we don't have many stops there. But there are stops along twenty-six, um, thirty-two going south, towards Howard County and, and, but that do not have, they have the center lane, but they don't have a barrier. And, um, that's the education piece, but you have got to stop and those cameras will pick you up. And the video is, you saw the video. It's pretty sophisticated. Even if it's a car that comes right by the bus or if it's several lanes over, it'll pick it up for us and give us the, the information. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, Ms. Steckel, why don't you come on up here with Ms. Yates and I think Paul, you're coming up as well. Talk about the annual plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Carroll County Bureau of Housing to be displayed for public comment for a forty-five day period. And it's based on federal regulation, but I'm not going to get into that.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, no kidding.
Thank you very much. Your morning.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning.
I'm joined this morning, uh, by Danielle Yates. She's our Bureau Chief of Housing and Community Development. And then also Paul Moffett. He is our manager, um, of our housing, uh, program. You as the Board of County Commissioners serve as our governing body of our public housing authority and our annual plan that we're required to review. Um, and that's why we're here before you today. Each year, we look at some of the, the changes that could be made to our plan to make us a better housing authority, to be more reflective of how we're actually operating our housing authority. Um, and this year is no different. We have throughout the past year come up with some, some different differences in the program, um, implemented some changes and we want to reflect those in our, our annual plan. So this morning, I'm here with Danielle, who's going to walk us through some of those changes. Um, but just to give you some statistics, we currently have seven hundred and ninety-six Housing Choice vouchers. Of those vouchers, we have some different types of vouchers. So one hundred of those are non-elderly disabled vouchers. Thirty-three are family unification program vouchers. Fifteen of those are HUD VAS vouchers, our Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing vouchers. A hundred and nineteen are our mainstream vouchers and five hundred and twenty-nine of those are tenant, tenant-based rental vouchers. The process that we're initiating, initiating here today, uh, with you will formalize the recommended changes and allow the po- public to comment and review the changes, um, that we are making today. So I'm going to turn this over to Danielle to walk us through. We have five different changes we're recommending. Um, and if you have questions, uh, you can either hold them till the end or ask away as we're presenting. Um, go ahead, Danielle.
So, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Celine noted, we're here to discuss the changes to our fiscal year twenty-three annual plan. There are five adjustments that we have recommended. Our first can be found in chapter four, which is applications, waiting list and tenant selection. We have made a ju- an adjustment to our special admissions selection. We have adjusted the number of referrals that we receive from our family shelter from serving two households annually to five. And we have designated five vouchers as part of our move-on strategy for our disconnected rapid rehousing youth. We have also made an adjustment in chapter twelve, which is moves with continued assistance and portability. We have adjusted language to restrict porting, which is the process of moving from one public housing authority's jurisdiction to another. Households will not be permitted to exercise portability within the first year of tenancy when leasing up with our housing authority. Our final adjustments can be found in chapter fifteen, which is program integrity. We have adjusted the maximum length of time that a repeat repayment agreement can be used to up to thirty-six months. Previously, the maximum length was twenty-four months or two years. We have also attempted to more clearly identify when a repayment agreement is considered in default. We have done this by indicating that if a payment is not made within the last working day of the month, it will be considered missed. And if there are three missed periods in a twelve-month period in total, this will place that repayment agreement into default for further action and collection. Are there any other questions you may have or can we clarify some of the changes that we're making here?
Are there any questions?
I did want to add, um, just a little detail about Carroll County's Housing Choice voucher program, uh, which I don't know that everyone understands. One of the things that we ser- um, that the population that we serve here in Carroll with our Housing Choice vouchers, um, right now we are at ninety-nine percent utilization of folks that are either older adults or disabled individuals. I think that sometimes people have a misconception about, um, the population served by Housing Choice voucher programs. And in Carroll County, we are serving those folks most in need, um, our vulnerable individuals. So I just wanted to make that clear. And, and one other thing is just to, to make sure folks are aware also that this is a continuum of our housing solutions in Carroll County. And so when we talk about the cha- the changes that we're recommending here, we don't do this in a vacuum, just with the Bureau of Housing. We, we meet with our COC. We talk with the executive committee. We have subcommittees of the executive committee of the COC, the Continuum of Care for Homelessness, um, where we, we talk about how we're, we're not meeting the needs and how can we do it better? Um, and, and part of the recommendations with these vouchers, um, is to make those changes that the team has identified. And this is, the whole county comes together to, to help us with this process.
And in extension to that, we also have what is called a resident advisory board, where we actually have landlords and participants of our program that we meet regularly with and we discuss the changes. So we make sure we're getting input from those who are actually being affected by the changes within the program as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that and, um, the integrated approach that you do have. I don't know if you've come in front of us to walk us through the continuum of care, um, process. And that may be something, uh, valued for, uh, myself and colleagues. The importance of it and also a little bit of, um, brain power from us on what may be missing. Or what may be duplicative, duplicative, um, where we can, you know, save resources. But where are the gaps and redundancies and duplication? You do a great job with it and you know how I feel about that. Um, but I think there's value just for, uh, just for information to us. Because it is a very valuable tool that we have in Carroll County, again, where Carroll County is take care of our community. So, um, yeah, just, we'll, we'll figure out a time, but, you know, just put it on. So with that though, um, need a motion for this administrative plan to stay, uh, available for forty-five days.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the display of the annual plan for forty-five days for public review and comment and announce a public hearing prior to the April sixth, twenty twenty-three to consider approval to submit the FY twenty-three annual plan to HUD.
Okay. Second. I got a motion. I got a second. Any discussion on this? Seen here none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We now are going to move into a public hearing regarding the rezoning case number two twenty-eight, Eldersburg Investors Two LLC. Burke, did you want to get a story on this or?
Yes. Good morning. This is a public hearing to, uh, consider a piecemeal rezoning request. It is a, uh, a hearing which will be first hearing from our department planning and then we'll be hearing from the, uh, developer, the applicant. So at this point, maybe we'll turn it to, uh, our department planning.
And also if there's public here.
If there's any public comment today, please fill in a comment card and hand it to, uh, Mrs. Wyndham.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, we are here before you today, as Mr. Burke said, for rezoning case two twenty-eight, Eldersburg Investors LLC. This is, um, similar to the case that you heard a few weeks ago, again, where it was a piecemeal rezoning. It'll be the same process and procedure as you did in that case as well. Hannah Weber is with me today and she is the staff person who put together the staff report and the planning commission report. So with that, I'm going to have Hannah go ahead and introduce the case to you.
Thank you, Linda. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Getting started, um, as you can see, we're here for a public hearing for rezoning case two twenty-eight, Eldersburg Investors Two LLC. As always, this public hearing was advertised. You can see here the ad that ran in the Carroll County Times. There was also signage posted along Maryland twenty-six on the frontage of the property. And then we also sent letters out to adjoining property owners notifying them of today's hearing. Getting into the details, locating ourselves, we are inside the Freedom Designated Growth Area in Commissioner District Five. The petitioned area is located across from Liberty Exchange on the south side of Maryland twenty-six. The petitioned area is four separate parcels and those four parcels are totaling twelve point four seven acres. All four parcels are currently zoned C-two commercial medium and the request is to rezone all four parcels to C-three commercial high. The applicant is arguing that there is a mistake in the current zoning and that a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood has occurred. So since a change in the neighborhood argument is being used, we had to establish a neighborhood boundary in which the change occurred inside of. Here you can see our petitioned area highlighted in blue. The neighborhood boundary encompass, encompasses Liberty Exchange. And then we travel west on Liberty Road to the Clees Mill Road and Liberty Road intersection down to that commercial area. And then we loop back around to the petitioned area all along Liberty Road. And this boundary was agreed upon by Department of Planning staff as well as the applicant. So as said in the beginning, the petitioned area is all zoned C-two. You can see we have some conservation in the area, R-twenty thousand, R-forty thousand, and then some I-one industrial light in the surrounding area. Part of our process is to send out the transmittal for agency comments. We have the agencies that we sent the transmittal to listed here. We sent this transmittal to the Reservoir Technical Group, who is a part of the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, because this area is, um, located inside the Liberty Reservoir. We received one advisory comment from the Carroll County Health Department. They advised that the proposed use may not be acceptable unless it is demonstrated that there is an adequate water supply and adequate area for the installation of an initial and two replacement septic systems for the proposed use and any existing uses of this property. And they noted that is only for parcel seven oh-three, which is this parcel second from the left.
Why is that?
I am not sure why it is only that parcel.
I mean, isn't that?
Yeah.
That's weird.
Yeah. Um, we're not quite clear on that comment either as far as what it pertains to. However, and the reason we didn't even see clarification is that these series of properties were part of the Water and Sewer Amendment in the fall. So they, um, were adopted by this body here and have been sent to MDE for their approval. So that will not be, um, an issue. If and when this should become, uh, developed because it will be on water and sewer service.
Okay. Cause, yeah, that doubts.
Yeah. We just bring it forward to you as one of the comments received.
Moving forward, as stated in the beginning, the applicant is arguing a mistake in the current zoning. I'm only going to hit the highlights as the applicant will have their time to dive into details later on in the hearing. The petitioner alleges mistake in the current zoning of C-two. The zoning authority could not anticipate that the four contiguous parcels would come under the control and ownership of a single entity and thus would present commercial development opportunities more appropriate for a C-three zoning district. The property was mistakenly viewed as not being eligible for immediate sewer service during the most recent comprehensive rezoning of the parcels. Individual rezonings in the area show that more intense commercial uses, such as a business park, have been recognized as appropriate in the area. The continuing development of the Liberty Exchange project, including the potential development of the pad sites directly across Liberty Road from the property would, could and likely entail a commercial development that would be compatible with C-three zoning. Unlike some other areas of C-two zoning along Liberty Road, the property backs up to agricultural zone land, which is a lower density slash mixed-use type zone, which would be, um, uh, compatible with C-three uses such as a business park. The I-one zoned property immediately to the east of the subject property suggests that a heavier zone than C-two would be appropriate. And lastly, the property is appropriate for a C-three zoning designation, which is the only zoning district in the county allowing for development of a business park.
It backs up to agriculture or conservation? I thought it was conservation.
Conservation.
Conservation zone land, but it's an agricultural usage.
Yeah, okay. It's agricultural usage, but it's conservation zoned.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure what you had on that slide that we just saw. I apologize.
This is the petitioner's arguments taken from their petition that they submitted to us.
Agricultural, yeah, but you see, you have backs up to agriculturally zoned land. That's not true. It's.
Yeah, we, we copy it directly. We don't want to change.
Yeah, that wasn't.
I, I see what you're saying. Okay. Yeah. Because it's conservation zoned.
Correct.
Agriculturally used. Got it. I see what you're saying, okay. Yeah, because it's conservation zoned, agriculturally used. Got it. Okay.
So those were the applicant arguments of mistake and the staff draws the conclusions. Staff believe there was no mistake in the last comprehensive rezoning in applying the C-two designation. At the time of the last comprehensive rezoning, three of the four parcels in the petitioned area were requested by the then-property owner to rezone from R twenty thousand residential to C-two. This was part of the by-request phase of the comprehensive rezoning process that was adopted in twenty twenty-one. Following in-depth research of the rezoning request, a staff report was prepared by planning, presented to both Planning Commission and the County Commissioners, and the rezoning was ultimately adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, rezoning the properties to C-two. The fourth parcel was rezoned from R twenty thousand to Business General BG, following the comprehensive rezoning process in the early two thousands. Similar to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one by-request process, the then-property owner applied for a rezoning, a staff report was prepared by planning, presented to both Planning Commission and the County Commissioners, and the zoning was ultimately changed from R twenty to BG. And then following the elimination of the BG districts, that fourth parcel was placed into the C-two zoning district.
So let me just, a little bit of history again. As we went through the process twenty twenty-one, we moved it from R twenty thousand, those four parcels.
These three parcels were originally zoned R twenty.
To C-two.
Correct.
We did that by a request or was it done?
Correct. The then-property owner, different than the one today, applied for those, for that rezoning.
And there's no C-three property in this community at this time?
Correct.
And then a little bit later on.
Before that.
Before that, you're right. We moved that residential to C-two.
Correct.
To Business General.
BG, yeah.
To Business General.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And where would the closest C-three zoned property be to this location here? I'm going to put you on the spot because I don't think your map's that big.
To the east, toward thirty-two intersection.
It's not there. It's way down by twenty-six thirty-two intersection.
And for, and you know, I'm guilty of not bringing my awesome hand out with me. But if you had to characterize the difference between C-two and C-three, it sounds like it's a, there's a difference, but I mean, I'm reading through the slides. It's a level of intensity. I mean, can you explain a little bit about what people watching might glean from that?
And so let me just clarify too. So there's no other C-two zoned, I mean, C-three zoned property in this area? However, the land use designation of the industrial piece across, which is now, which is the Liberty Exchange property, does have a land use designation in the Freedom Plan as commercial high. Just during the by-request phase, the decision by the property owner was to not rezone their property, wanted to stay in the I-one district. So just to, so it's kind of like totally not out of character to have this more intense of a use out here. So Hannah, can you just give them a briefing of what the difference between C-two and C-three is from the definitions?
And then also, the Liberty Exchange, it's one of a kind.
Yes, correct.
It is one of a kind in the county that.
Correct.
You know, so, and that's also important to understand, that it's not, you know, we're doing this model in other place, this is one of a kind model. So it does, in that sense, conform to the rest of it, but there's still the question, where else is C-three? So, but, go ahead.
So in your booklet, the definition of the C-two medium intensity district, a diverse range of medium intensity retail, service, and professional office uses needed by a larger population than those provided for in the C-one district. Bicycle and pedestrian access are encouraged where possible. And then for C-three, high intensity, large-scale retail businesses and destinations of a regional nature, planned business parks, clusters of commercial development, wholesale businesses, offices, and certain light processing operations.
And it's also the intensity of the square footage is allowed of the various buildings types. So I think a C-two goes up to sixty thousand square feet and then C-three can go beyond that.
Okay, so I'm going to keep on going. The petitioned area was given a land use designation of commercial medium in the twenty eighteen Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan, making its current C-two zoning consistent with that land use designation. So looking at all of this, the designation of the petitioned area as C-two was deliberate as each specific parcel was specifically looked at for its current zoning of C-two.
Now that was just for the mistake argument?
Correct.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
Going back to the C-two and C-three differences, there's differences in the uses of permitted and conditional uses. There's no differences in the height restrictions and all of that stuff. That's
Correct.
the same, whether it's C-two or C-three. It's, you know, fifty feet max height, fifteen feet, you know, side yard, ten, and then ten front. I mean, that's in C-two and C-three, correct? Yeah. I'm looking.
If you're reading it, then yes.
Yeah, I'm reading.
From my mind, I can't.
That's okay. I'm reading what you wrote. So, yeah, so it's really focused on the use.
And the intensity, correct.
And the intensity, but not on the properties' dimensions.
Correct.
Okay.
So that is the mistake argument. Staff does not believe there was mistake in the designations of C-two. Moving on to the change arguments presented by the applicant, there have been substantial changes in the character of the neighborhood related to road improvements, surrounding rezonings, changes to the water and sewer service areas, and development of the surrounding area. Changing the public sewer service status of a property is a substantial change in the character of the property, rendering it a different animal in the neighborhood with real potential to affect and influence the neighborhood in a fundamentally different way than a septic well property would. Zoning text amendments allowed for the hybrid retail slash industrial uses, changing the character of the neighborhood by creating a tenant mix virtually next door to the property that would be more compatible with C-three zoning.
And again, this is from the applicant. This is what the proposal is.
Okay.
So staff conclusions of the change argument. Staff believe there has been a change in the character of the neighborhood. As we discussed earlier, the petitioned area applied for and is currently going through a water and sewer fall amendment. The property is currently in the existing and priority service category for water and the long-range service category for sewer. The purpose of this amendment is to bring the entire petitioned area, which is approximately twelve acres, into the priority service category for both water and sewer. Bringing the petitioned area into these service categories will increase the allowable water and sewer allocation for a possible development. This amendment was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners and forwarded to the Maryland Department of the Environment for the official approval at their January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three open session. As stated in the petitioner's arguments of change, Maryland case law specifically notes that changes in the public water and sewer infrastructure can constitute as a substantive change. At the time when the C-two zoning district was designated to the petitioned area in twenty twenty-one, county staff were unaware the petitioned area would come under the control and ownership of a single entity, ultimately increasing the acreage of the parcels. Some of the major differentiating factors and uses allowed in the C-two and C-three district are intensity and necessary acreage. The C-three zoning district allows for more intense uses, but those uses also tend to require a larger acreage. Now that the petitioned area has increased in acreage due to ownership, it may be more suitable for those C-three uses. So that's it for the details of the rezoning case. As we get closer to you all making your decision, the annotated code of Maryland states the legislative body shall make findings of fact that address population change, the availability of public facilities, present and future transportation patterns, compatibility with existing and proposed development for the area, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and the relationship of the proposed amendment to the local jurisdictions plan. At the January seventeenth Planning Commission meeting, they gave this rezoning a favorable recommendation to you all. This was introduced and requested to go to public hearing at your January twenty-sixth open session. Today, we are here for a public hearing. And then if no decision is reached today, we have time scheduled next Thursday, February twenty-third, for a final decision from you all.
And as of today, we have not had any comments come in from the public submitted. So not that there's not public here on the phone, but no one has submitted anything.
The Planning Commission favorable, was it a heated discussion? Was it a?
It was a unanimous decision by them.
Unanimous.
Mm-hmm. They felt that the Water and Sewer Amendment constituted a change in their opinion.
Yeah. Okay, trying to think if there's any other questions.
Back to which we've talked about in other cases, to use and ownership, this is four parcels.
Correct.
We can talk about the zoning. The four parcels will remain four parcels and could ultimately be individually owned later?
So we're going to have the applicant address some of that in their report, what their intent is. But again, when you make your decision, contemplate it for all C-three uses. I know it's always interesting to hear from what an applicant is proposing to do, but it's not until the site plan is approved and construction happens that that use will come to fruition.
And the applicant owns all four parcels at this time?
Correct, that is our understanding, yes.
So that gives it another dynamic, so. Okay, are there any other questions for our staff at this time?
Not at this moment for me.
Can I ask one question? Do the Commissioners have the planning staff report?
It was sent to them prior to their introduction in January.
Let's make that a part of the record for today's hearing.
If you can. Thanks. Okay.
And just to clarify, when was it, when did it go from R twenty to C-two? Again, what was the date that that was approved?
It was adopted in early twenty twenty-one, Commissioner Rothstein, and, yeah, the previous board.
Right, we.
Previous board.
Correct, yeah.
Correct. We went through properties specifically on, um, south of Liberty Road that we moved from residential to C-two. Those by Princess Shopping Center, all the way down to this, I remember, so.
I believe it was approved in December and then went into effect in January of twenty twenty-one.
Right. So it was just to conform the south part of Liberty Road into more of a commercial district, so, okay.
Any other questions from the Commissioners?
Okay.
Commissioners, staff, the applicant is here, represented at seat at the table. Sit down, staff. Do you have any questions of, do you have any questions of staff after you identify yourself for the board?
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners. Kelly Schaefer Miller, seventy-three East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland, two one one five seven. I'm here today on behalf of Eldersburg Investors Two LLC. Commissioner Rothstein actually asked the only question that I did have of staff already, so I do not have any. Thank you.
So what was that question? Just curious.
It was just to confirm that the Planning Commission discussion and favorable recommendation was unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, so you guys can take a backseat, so.
Thank you. I am going to call my first witness, Mr. Thomas Pilon. I also prepared, and I want to make sure that I project into the microphone, packets of all of our exhibits for you, and I will point out a few of them once I hand them out because Mr. Burke just asked about a few, so.
Thank you. While you're doing that, would anybody who's going to testify, please stand and swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true? Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd love one if you have.
I wish the other Mr. Schaefer, Schaefer had this so organized, but thank you. Just saying, I mean, it was, you know, one thing after another, didn't know where it was coming from, but this is very succinct.
After last week, we said the first.
Just saying. Once again, there's noise coming from the back. I don't know.
Yes.
I also have an extra copy that I'm going to set right here in this chair in case anyone needs to look through there. So just briefly, before I officially call Mr. Pilon, I want to point out that the first entry in there is legal memorandum, which is just a very brief synopsis of some of the case law that supports the arguments that are going to be made here today. The second exhibit is a timeline that also points out some of the dates that were just asked about. So hopefully that will be helpful to just have in front of you. The third exhibit is also a copy of the county staff report. So in case you didn't already have a copy printed in front of you, there's one included in this packet as well. So, and then the fourth exhibit is a copy of the staff report that was part of that by-request comprehensive rezoning effort that staff just spoke to in the introduction. So I've included packet, or copies of each of those just for convenient reference throughout and would ask that those be entered as the first four exhibits. And then we'll talk through the rest as we continue our presentation.
So move.
Thank you. Mr. Pilon, can you please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record, please?
Thomas Pilon, P-I-L-O-N, twenty-five sixty Lord Baltimore Drive, Windsor Mill, Maryland, two zero, or two one, two four four.
And Mr. Pilon, can you please tell the board where you are employed?
Saint John Properties.
And can you explain your role and experience at Saint John Properties?
Sure. I am the Executive Vice President of Development. My department is responsible for shepherding our projects through the, some people would call the entitlement process or however you want to refer to it, basically from due diligence until we have permits in hand and then we hand it off to our construction group.
And can you tell us just a little bit about Saint John Properties in general?
Sure. So Saint John Properties was founded in nineteen seventy-one by Edward Saint John, who is still the Chairman of the Board and executive of the, main executive of the company. We're located in, I mentioned Windsor Mill near Baltimore. We have been for the last fifty years developing business parks in and around the greater Baltimore metropolitan area as well as a number of other areas throughout the state as well as in several other states, Wisconsin, Colorado, Utah, Texas, North Carolina, maybe some others. And we own and operate about twenty-three million square feet of commercial office, industrial space that we lease to businesses and such. We're a long-term real estate investment company. We're privately held, but over the last twenty-six years that I've been with Saint John Properties, our portfolio has increased from about six million square feet to about, to the twenty-three million that we're at today. So, and we don't tend to sell stuff. We develop only for ourselves and we're general contractors and such as well. So we're just building a portfolio.
Is it a fair summary to say that Saint John Properties is what we would call a buy and hold type of developer?
Yes.
And can you briefly describe how you became familiar with opportunities in Carroll County?
So we have an acquisitions group. I mentioned that we do our work from due diligence through the permitting phase. We have a group of individuals who are out looking for opportunities to invest. So as they're doing that throughout the state, we've been, you know, keeping an eye on Carroll County and kind of looking for opportunities.
Now, the application in front of this board is in the name of Eldersburg Investors Two LLC. What entity would develop this property?
So Saint John Properties would act as the development entity on behalf of the LLC.
And it's accurate that the LLC owns all, took ownership of all four of these parcels?
That's correct, yes.
Can you, was it on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two that Eldersburg Investors Two acquired all four parcels by deed? Is that the correct date?
Yes, that's the right date, yes.
Now, I'm going to show you what I've marked, and I've tried to mark these as the exhibit numbers in the left-hand column, but then I've tried to paginate also because there's a lot of pages here. So I'm going to turn to what I've marked as petitioner's exhibit five, which begins on page thirty-two of the actual packet. And the page numbers are kind of in the upper right-hand corner for you, so. Mr. Pilon, briefly, you don't, I mean, you have seen these before, so I won't ask you to review them, but is it accurate that applicant's exhibit five represents the deeds to each of these parcels?
Yes.
Okay, and that those indicate that Eldersburg Investors Two LLC And that those indicate that Eldersburg Investors II LLC took ownership on the 26th of July 2022, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it correct that three of the parcels currently have residences improved on them?
Yes.
Okay. And are those currently occupied?
No, they're not.
Can you tell us what the status is of those residences?
So, they are currently just secured and vacant. As recently as yesterday, we inspected the properties just to be sure that there's nothing going on, you know, that nothing's in disorder and such, but yeah, they're currently vacant and secured.
I would like to ask that petitioner's exhibit five be entered, please.
Yep, got it.
Thank you. Mr. Pilon, has St. John Properties developed any other sites in Carroll County?
Yes.
Okay. And is that known as Liberty Exchange?
Yes.
Okay. Where is Liberty Exchange located?
Uh, just to the north, on the north side of Liberty Road, kind of opposite this property.
So, on that neighborhood map, just so that everybody has the context, the neighborhood map that's part of the staff report, is that shown on there?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the large swath of purple, which is industrial, correct?
It's half of it.
Okay.
One half is the tobacco, I forget the name of the tobacco flavoring company, and then the western half is Liberty Exchange.
Okay, thank you. Would you consider Liberty Exchange a successful project in Carroll County?
Yes.
Is Liberty Exchange a good example of the type of development, generally speaking, that St. John Properties does?
Yes.
Describe a little bit the tenant mix for these type of parks, how they're selected, and how we come up with, you know, a Liberty Exchange-type product.
So, Liberty Exchange is comprised of a few different building types. As you move from the front of the property to the back of the property, we have kind of traditional retail buildings at the front, and then we have one-story office buildings, and then the back are what we call flex buildings, which are suitable for different types of uses. All of those buildings lend themselves to being multi-tenanted, which means that you can have multiple principal uses in the, in the buildings themselves. So, the retail buildings, you know, we're typically looking for retail-type uses. Inside of our parks, we're always looking for a lot of convenience-type uses. Our tenants, excuse me, would typically be looking for, they kind of ask us two questions, where can I park and where can I eat? Excuse me. They, um, so that's kind of what's at the front of the property, and then we've got, there were some medical uses and things like that in the office buildings. They, those buildings tend to lend themselves to that type of a tenant, and then the back buildings can be a mix of types of uses. As an example, the brewery is back in the one building, we have a outdoor supply for like patio furniture and things like that in one of the buildings. So, the tenants, in working with the brokerage community, we have in-house leasing agents, and they're responsible by kind of areas, so we have someone who's designated to this area, and they work with the brokerage community to bring tenants to our parks, and we go through and we look at them and qualify them as, you know, good tenants, meaning basically that they can pay the bills, they have a successful, a good-looking business plan, and they can pay the bill, and then we lease them to them. Second.
I think that was a, that was a good summation. If this petition were successful, is it the intent of St. John Properties to develop these four parcels as a business park?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain, now, recognizing that a business park is a different section of the code than what Liberty Exchange has developed under, can you explain why St. John Properties finds the business park model appealing?
Sure. I mentioned earlier, when I was talking about the different types of buildings that we have, business park allows for those uses, so we could do some retail uses in there, we can have office uses, and we can have flex buildings, and in fact, we're intending to do a mix like that with this park, so it would be similar, even though it's different, it would be similar to what we, the success that we've had over at Liberty Exchange.
And I'm sorry, you said flex buildings?
Flex, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's a building type. It's kind of like a retail building. If you'd like a little explanation, if not, I just...
Sure.
The flex building is somewhat like an in-line retail building, meaning that you, it's designed with the intent of allowing, you could have, you could have a law firm in there, you could have a doctor's office in there, you could have a, you know, sometime light manufacturing, we have the brewery in one of the buildings. So, the front of them is like a one-story office building. You walk up, you have your own private entrance. We don't have what's called common areas in the building, so when you lease a bay or multiple bays of that building, you have your own entrance and you kind of control your own environment, and then the back of the building has a loading component to it so that you can, if you have trucks that need to come and go and things like that. And through our portfolio, we have a wide range of uses that land in these business parks and the, in the flex buildings, but it's, a lot of people confuse it with a use as opposed to a building type. You have retail buildings, you have office buildings, you have medical office buildings, and your flex buildings are some of the types, so.
And piggybacking that question, the, um, the flex buildings typically are built prior to having tenants, so you can be flexible, but the other buildings there, will you build them for tenants, or some will also be, you know, you don't know who's going to be in it yet, but you're building it?
So, we, St. John has, our whole business motto is we're speculative builders, meaning that we build in advance. We look at a market, we make a determination as to whether or not we think that market is in need, and then we build there, and then we actually carry that through, so like, we'll build a building, when that building's 50% leased, we'll build the next building so that we always have availability until we've finished out a project and it's, and it's stable. Kelly asked earlier if, you know, if we considered Liberty Exchange a successful business park, and the answer is yes, it's, it's a stable park, we're getting market rents, you know, we've got a good mix of tenants in there and things like that, so yes, we, we build speculatively. The difference at Liberty Exchange, the very front of that, where it's currently, there's nothing up there, those are pad sites, and pad sites, we would typically be looking to lease that piece of land to somebody who would build their own building, or we might build for them, so, yeah.
Thank you for those questions. You, you, he, he's already answered some of my questions, so...
That's a good thing.
No, that's a good thing, that's a good thing. We moved, uh, we moved efficiently, I like it. So, Mr. Pilon, you understand that, that this petition, if approved, would result in C3 zoning, which is, you know, subject to the conditions, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And although you've testified that the intent would be to develop a business park on the site, you understand that any C3 use would be, could be developed on the site, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
One quick follow-up to my entity question about Eldersburg Investors II. Can you confirm that Ed St. John is a principal in Eldersburg Investors II LLC?
He's a, he's a member.
Member, okay. I, I think member is the correct legal term for an LLC, so yes.
I've sworn in, you know, I got...
I know, you have to be 100% accurate. Yes, no, I appreciate that. And then circling back to some of the discussions about the flex buildings, can you also confirm that the St. John Properties model usually is a brick and glass type of structure?
Usually, always.
Always.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. See, even more accurate. Okay, those were my last questions and concludes my testimony of Mr. Pilon.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pilon? First question I do have is, first off, are you the senior St. John representative here this afternoon?
Yes.
This morning?
Do you mean by age or by title?
This afternoon.
Yes to both.
Okay. So, I want to make a couple of comments pretty clear because social media can get away from people, and it's, it's garbage in so many cases, especially when people write anonymously, which is even more garbage, but I have no intent of recusing myself in any decision we make because I believe I can be very unbiased, as I've shown over the last five years. It actually questions my ethics over 30 years in uniform, so I will stay unbiased. And the reason I'm bringing this up now because you are senior, because we've known each other for four years, and I've watched Liberty Exchange continue to succeed, and, you know, speaking to, and I know he's back there somewhere, Mr. Lyburne, on Liberty Exchange, and also to Mr. Twill, who's now Howard County Economic Developer, on its success, and they were my counterparts when I was the economic developer in Anarundel County, which I think is still probably the largest county that St. John has property.
Maybe Baltimore and Anarundel together.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I mean, just phenomenal, and the success we had with a developer like St. John's, along with Maryland and others, but St. John specifically and Anarundel was second to none, and, you know, no favoritism, no, you know, doing things inappropriately, everything was very transparent with the county executive at that time, led to a lot of success. St. John is a contributor to me, but I don't think it's St. John Properties, I think it's from a St. John entity.
It would have been one of the entities.
So, yeah, and, you know, just as I get donations or whatever, contributions from others, which doesn't bother me, and probably all the large developers in the state because of my work from Anarundel County. And I'm just bringing this up very clear now because, again, you're, you're the senior, that you believe I can be unbiased in my effort, and I think our conversations have been very unbiased, not always going your way or St. John's way, and it's been very clear. So, yeah, just, I want my colleagues to rest assured, I want everybody in the community to rest assured, and all those, whether we call them snakes or whatever on social media that don't want to identify themselves, rest assured that I'm very comfortable in a very unbiased leadership role that I have on the dais, so. I do believe St. John's does a good product, you know, and that's what...
Thank you, appreciate that.
You know, in Liberty Exchange and Anarundel County, I mean, and we've talked about that, so.
You mentioned Anarundel County. I think we're the second-largest taxpayer in Anarundel County. I've been with Ed since 1997 at St. John, and almost every business park in Anarundel County now that we've developed has got my name on it as development manager, so it's been a place where we've been able to do a lot of investing, it's been really good.
And a lot of revenue coming back to the county, so...
Well, we try, you know, and, and as mentioned before, you know, we're long-term investors. Once we get involved in a community, we, you know, we're involved in the community, we, we're not fee developers, we don't turn and burn, so...
Yep. Yeah, I think, I just want to make more of that statement than the questions, but wanted to get the verification from you, knowing you're the senior here.
Sure.
So, okay, are there any questions or comments?
Just so I have a very, very basic sense of what we're looking at here so far, so the petitioner is saying that there was a mistake in the zoning and there was also substantial change in the neighborhood. Or, am I, do I have that right so far?
Yes, that's correct.
Then our, our own department is alleging that there was not a mistake in zoning, but there was a substantial change in the neighborhood. Am I, have I got that so far? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, no more, no more questions for me at this particular moment.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
I'd, I'd like to add a comment. I mean, regardless of the source, I think residents of the county, when they have questions, they should ask them. I think if, if people want to ask those type of questions, I think they have a right to do so, and they, they do deserve an answer, and unfortunately...
What type of questions?
Unfortunately, if, if people, if people want to ask, if, I mean, I'm not really sure exactly, exactly everything you're referring to, but if people have questions about their county commissioners and they want to ensure that they're taking an unbiased approach to all the decisions we make up here, I think it's in, with, completely within county residents' right to ask that question. How they do it and where they do it, that's always a debate, but we're not above reproach.
Oh, absolutely. We're not above reproach.
That's the point I'm making.
Absolutely.
Right now.
I agree, 100%.
And unfortunately, we, we are in a situation in the county where, and this is not, this is just the nature of things, county residents are concerned about development. It's not 1983 anymore, it's 2023, and people in this county have lived through enough development, enough traffic studies, enough plan studies to know that they need to pay attention to what's going on, and I think that's what you're seeing.
Yeah, I think nobody's above reproach, or reproach, whatever that word is. How it gets to us is a different story, and I'm making it very clear that I am unbiased. I'm making it very clear I hold my ethics in the highest regard to anybody that questions it, and whether I receive contributions from St. John's or anyone else, people can ask me the question anytime they want. I've made that very clear to everyone. How they do it, you know, unfortunately, social media has gone away from us, and it becomes very circular, and it's, uh, in many cases, very embarrassing that we can't get through to the truth of the matter, and that's my point that I'm making, so.
If I could very briefly say, I certainly respect the questions that have been asked, Commissioner, I respect the fact that you've addressed those questions, and if I could go back to the question, so why, remind me, why is there an alleged mistake in the zoning? What was the, what's the source of that? The allegation that there was a mistake in the zoning?
The two principal allegations, and, and the reason Commissioner Vigliotti, that I think led you to ask that initial question, which is, okay, are we claiming change and mistake, or one or the other, is because the, um, the two principal allegations kind of fit under both arguments, and that's why I put together that legal memo for you all too, because that summarizes some of the case law in regards to a mistake, and, and the fact that a mistake is not a disregard for information on the part of staff. A mistake under Maryland case law can sometimes be facts that were not part of a consideration because they weren't available at that time. So, to get to your question, the two principal statements, allegations, however you want to phrase them, are that there was a change to the sewer service area, okay? These properties, if you see on that, that timeline, these parcels went from long-range service to priority service, and the second change being that these properties went from individual ownership to common ownership, which significantly changes the development potential and use potential for them.
Say that one more time, it went from what to common?
It went from individual ownership of the four parcels to common ownership of the four. Eldersburg Investors II LLC now owns all four of those parcels.
And then based on the fact that there is now a common owner, you're saying that because the conditions of the ownership have changed, that constitutes the mistake that is being alleged?
It's, it's one of the basis for the mistake, yes, because at the time that zoning implemented, the, the most recent comprehensive zoning of that property, those were individually owned. Nobody knew that those were going to come under common ownership, so that has only been as of July of this past year that that occurred.
And thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Will this now be made one parcel, or will it remain four individual parcels?
Commissioner, you can, do you want me to start, or do you want to just jump in?
I can answer.
Okay.
So, the, what'll happen is we'll reconfigure the parcels so that we have, whether they become legally called lots or exactly what the right term will be, but we'll reconfigure the shape of the boundary lines so that each building sits on its own lot, and we do that for financing purposes. If you have it all on a single parcel, when you go to finance it, if you haven't built everything, it messes up how you, they'll, basically they'll escrow the money and then you're forced to build, and there's just a lot of junk goes on. So, yes, we'll reconfigure it, probably three lots would be my guess.
A point of clarification, not for you, but for you as far as what you share with us, those deeds, one of those properties was owned by Ms. Kirchner, correct? Or Kirchner, who is on...
No, she did not, she was not an owner, no.
I saw her name, I saw her name.
I think she witnessed one of those. I think she may have been a real estate agent.
Okay, I just saw, I saw her name.
She was involved.
She was the Realtor that...
Okay.
Yes, yeah, she was the agent.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that, that's good. I just briefly saw it and I saw the name, so...
And she did disclose that at the planning commission review as well, yes.
She has no involvement at this point.
So, just clarification, Ms. Kirchner is on our planning and zoning commission, and she did disclose that, that she was the agent.
Got it.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. If there are no further questions of Mr. Pilon, I would call my next witness.
Please.
Okay. Mr. Andrew Stein. Thanks, Stein. I call him Andy, so, so don't, uh, don't hold that against me if, if I, if I slip. Andy, can you please state your name, spelling your last name and address for the record, please?
Andrew Stein, S-T-I-N-E, 192 East Main Street, Westminster.
And Andy, where do you work?
I work for Development Design Consultants. Oftenly, we trade as DDC, Inc.
And can you just briefly describe to this board your educational background?
I have a master's degree in landscape architecture with a planning focus and a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture, and also I've been practicing a license in the state for... And also I've been practicing a license in the state for the last 22 years now, I believe.
So you're a licensed landscape architect in the state of Maryland, correct?
I am, and I was wrong. I've been practicing in the state for 22, but licensed for 20 at this point.
And approximately, how long have you worked in Carroll County?
My entire career. One of my first projects in Carroll County was working on the land acquisition for the Manchester bypass.
And during your time in working for the, with the county, are you familiar with the county's policies and the county code?
Yes.
Have you qualified as an expert in front of boards and agencies in Carroll County, Maryland?
Yes, both the BZA and the Planning Commission and various boards in all the incorporated municipalities.
I would like to offer Mr. Stein as an expert in the area of site development and planning.
Please.
Thank you. Mr. Stein, is it accurate that you prepared the plat that accompanied this petition?
Yes, I worked with our surveyors in our office. Those exhibits are typically sealed by surveyors, but I worked directly with them in preparation of the rezoning plats.
Can you generally describe to us what goes into the preparation of that plat? What's looked at in preparing that plat?
All the boundaries are field surveyed. So there's a field survey conducted. We look at tax records. We look at zoning information. We look at water and sewer category, master plan information.
Now, you've, you're familiar with the area that we are outlining as the neighborhood in this case and that is part of the staff report, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can you just describe, generally describe that area to us?
As has been mentioned previously, it's largely comprised of the Liberty Road corridor running from the larger industrial properties around Emerald Lane and Exchange Drive all the way west to the intersection and all the commercial properties down by Cleese Mill Road.
Now, I have marked in the packet here as Exhibit Six and it's on page 65. Okay, so I'm going to show Mr. Stein that. Mr. Stein, is this a copy of the county's official zoning map?
Yes, it is.
And does that show the properties kind of in the upper left corner there?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And can, I know you just described kind of the uses in the neighborhood, but looking at the zoning map, can you describe the surrounding zoning specifically?
Yes, there is a mix of industrial and commercially zoned land to the north and east. Immediately to the south is a conservation zone parcel. And to the west, there are residentially zoned properties along with those across the street.
I would like to ask that Exhibit Six be entered, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Stein, in taking a look at this property and the surrounding properties, is it accurate that there is a conservation easement on the large conservation zoned portion to the south of this site?
Yes, there was an easement granted to the Maryland Environmental Trust that I believe pertains largely to the function of a buffer along Liberty Reservoir.
So I'll refer to that, that is.
Maryland Forest Protection?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
So you said Maryland Forest Protection?
Maryland Environmental Trust.
Maryland Environmental Trust, okay.
Mr. Stein, as we talk through this, I'll have it in front of you. It is in the packet marked as Exhibit Seven and it begins on page 66 here. Mr. Stein, have you had the opportunity to review that easement document?
I have.
Okay, and I believe you just stated it, but can you just tell us again who the beneficiary of that easement is?
It's the Maryland Environmental Trust.
Okay. Is it an accurate summation that that easement document perpetually prohibits residential structures on the property except for one additional structure at the northwest property corner?
That is correct. It allows for a principal dwelling and accessory dwelling. And I believe it also mentions a possibility of having a recreational vehicle parked there.
So if you generally were to kind of summarize the impact of this easement on that type of property, would it be accurate to say that this really restricts any development potential on that southern portion?
Yeah, unless something were to happen with that easement, there probably would never be a major residential subdivision to the south.
Okay. I would like to ask that that Exhibit Seven be entered, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Stein, are you familiar with the Liberty, what's known as the Liberty Exchange project across the street?
Yes, I was involved with that property from practically the very start with St. John Properties. I was the project manager for the site component. There were a number of road improvements that our engineers worked on, but I oversaw the preparation and processing of the site development plan for Liberty Exchange. And I've been involved with that property for, I want to say 14 years now, even up through assisting with the permits for tenants like 1623 Brewing.
As part of that, but also any other projects you've been involved in, are you familiar with the site development plan process through Carroll County?
Yes, very familiar.
Can you just very generally describe the submittal and review process that that would occur as part of any site plan?
A pre-submittal meeting is scheduled with county staff, usually followed by a concept site development plan review that also involves conceptual stormwater management and sediment control. Once the concerns regarding those items have been addressed adequately, then a final site development plan is prepared and processed through the county.
And that also has opportunity for Planning Commission public review and then approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is it, is it accurate to say that if this rezoning petition were approved, that any development that would occur on these properties would still be required to proceed through that process?
Yes, the full process.
Okay. Now, you're familiar with the zoning code and the uses that are allowed in C2 and C3. If a use is listed as a principal use in a district, does that inherently mean that it can happen on a site, that a site can be developed with it?
It does not. There are numerous concerns. There are environmental factors. We have to look at traffic. We have to look at stormwater. We have to look at parking capacity. So just because a property possesses a certain zoning designation, that does not predetermine what that property will be used for. Every single property is different and there's a lot of technical review that ultimately determines what can be built there.
As a kind of super basic example, would it be fair to say that, for example, a 60,000 square foot retail use would never develop even if it were C3 zoned on a one-acre parcel?
Yeah, entirely possible that that would not happen or impossible it would happen.
You said impossible, right?
Yeah, possible.
I was making sure you say that into the microphone.
Possible not to impossible.
Yes, okay. Now, given that these four parcels each have access rights to Liberty Road currently, would the common ownership allow for a more central access point here?
Yes, it could allow for the establishment of access easements within the property that would allow vehicle entry and exit from the various parcels to be concentrated at one point.
Actually, I'm going to back myself up a second. I have marked as Exhibit Eight here, the very last page is an aerial photo. So I'm going to show that to Mr. Stein. This is an aerial photo pulled from the county's GIS map, correct? Andy?
Yes.
Can you explain just briefly how, how these individual parcels currently access Liberty Road?
371 and I believe it's 373 Liberty Road access through a shared driveway on the western side of the property. And 411 Liberty Road has its own driveway entrance, but there also appears to be an intermittently used paved connection between 411 and the shared driveway on the western side.
So currently there are multiple access points amongst these four parcels, correct? Onto Liberty Road? Okay. Aside from Liberty Road, do these properties access any other public street?
No, they do not.
Are you generally familiar with the state highway administration's guidelines?
Yes.
If these four parcels remained under individual ownership, would they each be entitled to access Liberty Road?
Yes, it is conceivable that they could petition for, to each have their own access.
Have you done enough concept work on the subject property to believe that the principal access for this site would be located at the existing Exchange Drive signalized intersection?
Yeah, that makes the most sense from a traffic standpoint is to take advantage of the existing traffic signal and the control and safety that provides.
And we have the benefit of designing the site that way because of the common ownership. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I would like to ask that this Exhibit Eight be entered, please. Thank you. Andy, does the water and sewer status of a property, service status of a property materially affect its development potential?
Yes, it absolutely does because there are rather stringent well and septic requirements that have to be met, including setbacks from things like paving and stormwater facilities. And the fact that these properties are slated to be provided or moved into the priority category removes a very large development impediment.
Would you consider that a drastic impact to a property, whether it was, had to develop well and well and septic versus public facilities?
Yes, I would.
And you just, I believe you just said it, but the sewer service status of these properties has changed since the last rezoning or has been adopted, I guess, by this board. I think it's still pending M.D. approval, correct?
I understand that, yes, it is in process.
Have you had the opportunity in preparation through this process to review the staff report?
I have.
And that's Exhibit Three, just for everybody's reference. Okay. Do you agree with the staff report?
I do concur with the staff's ultimate determination of change in neighborhood, yes.
Okay. And can you tell us whether in your opinion you believe C3 is an appropriate zoning district for this property? And why either way?
Given the, the size of the properties once assembled, the location on a major roadway like Liberty Road in proximity to an established traffic signal and also the proximity to adjacent uses like Liberty Exchange and the industrial and commercial properties to the east, yes, I do believe it is fitting.
I'm sorry, I'm just orienting myself. So you just said commercial properties to the east as well, correct?
Yeah, there's a small commercial property to the east. Commercial, they're industrially zoned, but there are a number of commercial uses in there.
Okay, are you familiar with what the use is to the west of these parcels?
Yes, although the property is zoned residential, it's actually, it's a church, so it's an institutional use on the immediate west of the property.
So in your opinion, is the C3 zoning of these properties compatible with the surrounding zones?
Yes, I believe so.
And in your opinion, I know you just said you agreed with the staff report, but in your opinion, has there been a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood?
Yes, I believe there has been, considering the build out of Liberty Exchange and the consolidation of the properties under a single ownership and the water and sewer change, yes.
Those are my only questions of Mr. Stein.
Okay, thank you very much. Additional questions?
I have, I have two. And if you can't answer the one, you know, off the bat, that's all right. I was just kind of curious if we know of any other areas, you know, offhand that are C3 that also are adjacent to residential and conservation areas?
Absolutely. The 27 corridor coming out of Westminster to the north, out of Westminster to the south. This happened, there are high commercial zones and industrial zones throughout the Finksburg area that are directly adjacent to conservation zones.
Okay, and my, so my second question then for you specifically, you'd mentioned a little while ago about, you know, trying to adapt the nature of the business of the surrounding area. That is to say that you will take into account what surrounds. And I heard you speak about, I mentioned specifically conservation, but what about the residential properties?
I don't believe I understand the question. Take them into account or?
Well, you would mention a little while ago that, that, you know, the kind of business or construction that will occur there is going to be reflective of what is surrounding the area that you're going to build out. And you had specifically talked about conservation being one aspect of how you might build something, like with respect to that. So, you know, the fact that there are homes that are located adjacent to this, are they going to factor into what you decide to do and how you decide to do it?
Yeah, I believe they would. When we developed Liberty Exchange, that property at that time was actually split zoned and the back half of the property was conservation. But I believe that the development and Liberty Exchange is a very good example to look at. I believe that has been very well integrated into the community and I think it would be possible, having done that before, that we could do it again.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So Liberty Exchange though has a tree line behind it.
It does.
And pretty much surrounded by a tree line from the neighbors, from the housing. Whereas this doesn't, correct?
It does not, but there, there are trees in places where it's possible to save them. We would save them, but also the county does have a landscape manual and the requirements to buffer between new uses and adjacent properties. Or in the case of something like this, pretty robust and they would be complied with.
Okay. Yeah, it's just when you, you know, talk about Liberty Exchange, I mean, you got to call, you know, call spade a spade, you know, like apples. And as I'm picturing it, I see this tree line with Liberty Exchange. I'd be interested, and it's not for you, but for our own team, there's a really good question about C3 that is next to conservation across the county or residential. You know, this, again, these ideas that we are overdeveloping and we're becoming other counties and Randallstownies and I, and I recognize those concerns. It'd be interesting to know if there's other corridors that are like this in the county. Does, you know, we're very focused on this, but, you know, I want to, that was a really good question. The, I, I do know the process when we want to develop on a piece of property and it's got to go through, you know, the TRC and go through all the different, you know, you know, decision, you know, process. And it may get caught up, you know, whether it's traffic or something, but this is where subjectivity comes into play and the community gets very concerned that, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. And I'm known to say, just because you can, doesn't mean you should in many cases. But when there's a will, there's a way, especially when it comes to development. And if it can't be this, it'll be that. So if we open up the spectrum of what C3 can provide and it can't do a specific project, it can turn into another project. You know, we just had this conversation a week or so ago with another piece of property. They want, the intent is to do this, but you open up that door, they can do that capability or they could do a whole lot more. And that's really what we're focused on is, and I'm very, you know, aware of and keen to the community's concern that, you know, just because you can, doesn't mean you should, but if there's a will, there's a way. And they don't want, like I don't want, overdevelopment in an area that doesn't need that or doesn't meet that. So, but I do know the levels. I mean, I understand that. That's what we're dealing with. I mean, and it's, and the community has a voice, as they should, so. Okay. What else? Any, any comments, questions? I mean, this is our time, but, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Just briefly, commissioners, I do want to distinguish it from that case last week because this is a commercial use requested to go to another commercial use. So in many ways, it's very different. And I, I think that if you look down that use chart and look at the differences and what changes here as a result of C3, ignoring a business park potential, what you'll see predominantly is that uses change from conditional to permitted. And really not that it opens up a bunch of greater uses. There's much less changes because of the C2 to C3 request here. So I would just encourage you to breeze through the use chart too, if there are questions there and I'm happy to answer any.
Very fair.
Thank you. I would next like to call Mr. Jack Lieber. Hiding in the back. Good morning. Or good afternoon.
And this is, this is not, this has nothing to do with whom, but he is a witness, but he wasn't here when you swore everybody in.
Oh, thank you for, thank you for pointing that out.
So if you stand up, Mr. Lieber.
Not that I don't believe everything he says, you know?
Mr. Lieber, you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate that. Mr. Lieber, can you please state your name and your address for the record?
John Lieber, 225 North Center Street, Westminster, 211-57.
And what is your current employment? And what is your current employment and position, please?
The Director of Economic Development for Carroll County.
Are you familiar with St. John Properties?
Very much so.
Have you been heavily involved since the inception of Liberty Exchange?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the property that we're talking about here today?
Very much so, yes.
Can you tell us whether, in your opinion, C3 zoning on these parcels would further the county's goal of encouraging economic development?
It's a, it's a easy answer, but a longer answer. Liberty Exchange has been one of the most successful projects we've had in Carroll County. And you're talking about, you're talking about a premier developer who we work with very closely. And flexibility is is the, is the, really, the question. And C3 gives us more flexibility than than the C2. The the nice thing, the greatest thing about working with St. John or the St. John Properties is they do build spec buildings. They build spec buildings. And when we we see clients, we really don't have a lot of inventory, and they have the inventory. So C3 gives us the more flexibility that we would need, and I really believe this, you know, be a mirror image of, you know, Liberty Exchange. And I think it's very beneficial for the county to have another project like that, another tool in our tool chest, so we can take, we can take projects to them, you know, with spec buildings. So yes, I do agree with, should be C3.
Thank you.
Longer answer than a simple question.
That, I appreciate that summation. That was my only questions of Mr. Lieber.
Any questions? Okay.
You finally got him under oath, this was your chance.
So many things we can, but we do want to move this along, so.
I'm always under oath, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my testimony in the case.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Schaefer? Okay, do we have public comments? First off, thank you so much. Chris, is there anyone on the line?
I have no one on the line, thank you.
Roberta, how many public comments do we have?
Two.
Okay.
Elizabeth Russell, come to the microphone and state your name and address and make your comments.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Elizabeth Russell. I live at 6016 Emerald Lane, which is the conservation area. Okay, so I noticed 11 suits walk into this room at the precise time that we're going to talk about this. So they probably missed in regards to earlier, when you mentioned the history of the courthouse, and you place value in the histories of our great county. In 2010, the census of Sykesville was 4,436. And in 2016, BudgetTravel.com named Sykesville the coolest small town in America. You mentioned that there's a mistake with the rezoning, but becoming more efficient, more efficient does not mean that we've created a mistake in our county and in Sykesville. Larger roadways actually reduce volume and traffic within the area. So there's less people in a certain amount of time. As regards to individual to common, AKA you bought a lot of different areas to combine to one, to create a massive structure. It's not appropriate in this area, backed up to a conservation area. This conservation area has horses that frequent the trails in that area. It's also known as Old Liberty Road, so we have a historical component to that. There was a lot of information discussed in that 22-page packet that you guys had, and I have chicken scratch. I'm a registered nurse at Johns Hopkins, so I don't have a suit. And when I'm not doing that, I wear combat boots in the United States Army. My husband's a law enforcement officer. And being that we live in that conservation area and backed up to this C3, you know, big component infrastructure stresses me out. Right now, my kids, four and three, can go outside without the fear that they're going to get run over by a car. I I'm afraid of the high-traffic and high-efficiency area that they're concerned in making. It will cause pollution, and not just the pollution of smog from cars, but also light and noise pollution. Sometimes I have to sleep during the day. I can't have construction going on, and that's only going to be the short term. Then I'm going to have consistent car traffic. I can go outside in my yard right now and see the stars, so many stars, but with a whole Liberty, what was it called? Liberty Exchange-like facility, I'm going to lose a lot of that. And you also talked about creating a larger intersection. So now there's going to be a higher-traffic congestion area at that site because you're adding more to it. So your zoning, how do I write this? You originally bought Liberty Exchange, and it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful structure. I use it, it's great. However, it's only, we made comments that there is no other C3 zoning. So if you continue to compare your new property to Liberty Exchange, why do you need to create that C3 property? I don't think the neighborhood supports this at all, conservation or just church or families. Thank you.
Couple just comments. Thank you for your service. And I'm very familiar with Emerald Lane. My daughter rides horses, or used to ride horses all the time, her horse on those trails. And so I'm very familiar. You brought up very good, solid points, and I appreciate that. Are there any questions, comments? Ms. Schaefer, you have any?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chris Vaughn is the only other.
Thank you for the, thank you for the, thanks for the opportunity to make, speak to you all, commissioners, about this. And I'm not going to speak nearly as eloquently as Ms. Russell, and I was very impressed by that. I do find the argument with the C2 to C3 to be very, very much a bait and switch. The properties were bought as C2 properties, they knew it when they bought them, and now they want to rezone it to C3. I, part of the neighborhood, I don't support the development of it. Ultimately, my property backs up to property which backs up to it. And I moved to Carroll County because I wanted a safe place to live, with great schools. Carroll County is a beautiful place. Mr. Kyler said, "It's great." He said that in the beginning, remembered that. And ultimately, I just don't see the value in it. We have seven vape shops, 11 liquor stores, I want to say 18 gas stations and some other stuff. The county is growing, Eldersburg specifically is growing at less than 1% on an annual basis, about 0.69% since the 2020 census. I don't see that being a significant growth margin to warrant such another complex like Liberty Exchange. What are we going to get? Five below, some other garbage stores. Don't think it's necessary. I also am concerned with the impact to the environment, even if there is sewer associated with it, from light noise pollution, as Ms. Russell brought up. But also, what about the other things that happen in addition to it? If it was to go forward, is there an escrow account to account for the environmental impact of it? Because it does back up to conservation land, which does back up to Piney Run, which all impacts my water under the ground that I use. So I'm tremendously concerned with this development. All it takes is driving, you know, 15 minutes east, another county, another town, not going to cite it, but I don't want to live there. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely, Mr. Vaughn, thank you for the comments and understand. When you're talking about vape shops, are you talking about in Eldersburg or in the county?
Eldersburg.
Okay. I had no idea. I, yeah, I don't get vaping anyway, so it doesn't make sense.
I agree with you, I don't either, and, I mean, that's a troubling indicator. And, you know, I think we can all agree, more people creates more crime, more problems, more pollution.
Agreed. The good thing is, we're doing really well.
That's correct.
And our Sheriff's Department and District Nine down in our area is very good, and I want to keep it that way, just as you do. So more of a statement than questions. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
May I add one more thing, sir? I want Eldersburg like that emblem on the, behind you. That's what I want. I don't want a skyscraper.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I just had one question.
I apologize. Mr. Vaughn, why don't you please come back up?
Absolutely.
Mr. Vaughn, I apologize if I missed it, but could you please state your address?
5715 White Rock Road.
Thank you.
Six house down, Teal Mailbox, can't miss it.
Yep, know it well. Not your house, but the road.
So are we able to ask a previous witness, I mean, I think that question was was pretty, I think it was a pretty salient question, that the property was purchased knowingly as C2, and now the desire is to upgrade it to C3. And while I understand that there are arguments that are being made about whether or not there is a mistake in zoning, the substantial change of the neighborhood, that sort of thing, what is the motive, the the underlying foundational motive to want to change it from C2 to C3 other than simply that, oh, well, we think there was a mistake in the zoning or that there was a substantial change in the the neighborhood?
Mr. Vigliotti, I'll take a shot at that one, and I'll let somebody else chime in if they disagree with me. I appreciate you recognizing the two legal arguments or the two principal legal arguments in terms of change or mistake. But right now, a business park, which, again, I understand that we are here requesting C3, so there's no way for you to commit us to a business park. But the only district that a business park is allowed to develop in under the code is C3 district.
And so I guess that that begs, and I promise I'm not trying to be argumentative or disagreeable or anything, but I guess that that begs the question that if, if this is what the developers originally sought, then why did they decide to go with the land that they went with to purchase?
Well, I I can't get into their head for that one, so I'm not going to even try to answer that one. But if Mr., you know, if Mr. Pilon wants to take a stab at it, I can recall him if you would prefer me to, but that one I can't.
I would just want to take it as a, as a business decision, either way.
Well, I I guess, are are you comfortable with that being the answer? That it's just a business decision that this is how you want to proceed?
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Yes, I would call Mr. Thomas Pilon again. Probably, I think you should introduce yourself at least again for the record.
Thomas Pilon, St. John Properties, Executive Vice President, Development. Thank you. So if I understood the question, the question was, why did we buy it when it was C2-zoned? And now proposing to rezone it to C3? I think the simple answer is, we, when we look, we we knew what we wanted to do, I think as far as the development of the property, we liked what we did at Liberty Exchange. We thought we could mimic that over here. And, you know, we're in the business of doing development. It's not outside the kind of realm of normal business operations to say you're going to take a property and reposition it. Sometimes we do that where we acquire an existing property that's already developed, and it's not getting, I mentioned before, market rents and things like that. And you do something to reposition the property. You go in and you put investment in the, you know, reface the building, redo the interior of the buildings and things like that. We took a building in Baltimore City several years ago that sits right on 95, and it 20% leased. And, and so out of a five-story building, one floor basically was occupied. And we got renovated, the whole building, made some changes to, we tore out the existing windows and made larger windows and things like that, and we modernized the building. And it's now a stable building, which means it's got 90% occupancy in it. So sometimes you you purchase something and it's not quite positioned exactly right, and you try to get it there and, you know, do the type of development you'd like, as investors that we'd like to do, so. So I guess I could simplify that by saying it's a business decision, but yeah.
Right, and I, I get that, but but your intent coming in was that you were going, you wanted to develop it in this capacity despite the fact that it had the designation that it did?
Yeah, I mean, we just saw the potential for it, and, yep, yeah.
And how often does that typically happen, that you say, okay, well, we're going to, you know, we see that that, you know, the the plot of land over here could really work well as a movie theater or whatever the case is, and this is, you know, even though it's not zoned for this, this is what we think it could be used for, and we're going to try to to take a go at it?
Right, so as an example, Baltimore County, Baltimore County does a comprehensive rezoning every four years. And in my years that I've been with St. John, this is my 26th year, every four years, we're taking something that we already own, and we're probably, and we're repositioning some portion of the property. As an example, we have a series of properties that run along York Road from the Beltway out to Hunt Valley. And over the years, the front portions of those properties that were industrially zoned, we we changed to commercial zones, and it brought that flexibility that I, when I talk about flex buildings and I talk about flexibility, I'm talking about two different things, but it brought that variety that allowed us to address the concerns and the needs of our tenants, which is, we want some convenience here, so we don't have to get in our car and drive down the road to get lunch. We just walk to the front of the community and get a sandwich or something like that. So it's a pretty, pretty commonly-used tool, along with, you know, tweaks to the zoning code and things like that. So it's, as I mentioned before, what I do, this is the kind of stuff that I do on a relatively regular basis, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Did the, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, yeah, because I want to, a little bit of what he asked, too. This is four parcels, and I know it's in here probably, and I could look at the deeds. Did you buy them all four at the same time, or was it staggered?
On the same day.
You bought all four at the same time?
We put them, it was two different, it was four different owners.
Yes.
And three of them were related, and one was not. And we put them all under contract, three and one, but we closed on the same day, purchased them all at once.
Yes.
Sorry. No, did the, did the fairly recent change in sewer and water allocation have a, play a role in wanting to go to C3? And am I, and am I characterizing that accurately? Okay, I want to make sure.
We did the, well, we actually petitioned to have it brought into the public sewer. Yeah, so it was part of, as I mentioned before, kind of a strategy on how to invest in the property. It was part of our request.
All right, thank you.
Separate, I know, separate, but part of the.
Okay, any other questions or comments, statements? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Did somebody have a question for one of the witnesses? Oh, you, that was for?
Yeah, that was the question, yeah, sorry, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. I think we're, we're done, unless you want to make any further comments?
I did just want to make a brief summation statement, if I could, please. Thank you, we appreciate your time here today. The case that you've seen before you presents a strong, we would advocate a strong change in the character of the neighborhood or a mistake case. We, we think that we've proven both, but we understand and respect the staff report, which leans towards the change in the character of the neighborhood. You have seen through all of the exhibits here, as well as the staff report and all of the other presentations, and also heard testimony today about the two primary factors, which Mr. Vigliotti nicely kind of surmised as well, that support this, namely, the change to the sewer service area and the common ownership of the four parcels. These really provide a much different opportunity than was present initially here. In analyzing this for rezoning, we understand that, you know, you have to look to see whether there's enough evidence to prove a change or a mistake, and then you take the next step at looking at what zoning district is actually appropriate if that first level is met. So I'd, I'd suggest to you that that first level has absolutely been met. Your staff report that you have in front of you kind of reiterates that and sets forth those arguments. So in, in looking at what district is appropriate, I respect and I appreciate the community comments that were made here today. I would remind you, as I did earlier, that this requested change is from C2 to C3. This would be a much different request before you if we were asking to change this property from residential to commercial. But this is a lesser change, if you will. And if you look in that legal memorandum, also, there's kind of a note of that in one of the cases that even talks about almost a different standard, if you will, when you're changing the zoning from a like-use to a like-use versus something entirely different. You heard from staff and from us that the planning commissioner, the planning commission, excuse me, and this board and the previous Board of Commissioners have consistently recognized and this board and the previous board of commissioners have consistently recognized these properties as appropriate for commercial development. You'll see that on the timeline in the, in the previous comprehensive rezonings and the comprehensive by request phase. I'll also note that the property to the west, if you look at the Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan, that is also noted as a future land use designation of commercial medium too. It just hasn't been zoned that way yet. The, I did briefly want to address Commissioner Vigliotti's one question about other C3 districts that abut residential. Because I think even if you look, I mean, you heard testimony from Mr. Stein that there are several throughout the county instances of this. And I think if you did an aerial, you would see that as well. But even just on this zoning map that is part of this packet, you can see several. This is not, that's not a unique situation in our county. I appreciate Mr. Lyburn's testimony and, and agree with him that C3 zoning district here allows for a higher and better use of this property with increased employment opportunities that come with that. I think if you saw individual C2 development of these four parcels, it would not be as appealing as a cohesive development that C3 would allow here. I, I understand, and I've said it several times, that we have told you our intent is to develop this with a business park, but that's one of the uses allowed in C3. But I would further say that the business park provision specifically of the code also requires this, many of the same things that Liberty Exchange requires in the sense of a common development plan that's cohesive. So that creates that park-like feel that you see at Liberty Exchange. This C3 is compatible with the surrounding area. You've heard testimony, you can see on the maps and by analyzing the uses of that area. So we think that this meets the legal standard. And then to take it a step further, that C3 is the appropriate zoning district here and would ask for this board's approval of the request today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have two actions to take. One is an action to close the public hearing at this time. And then the second action is to either make a decision now or allow us to think through this and make a decision in the near future about the request. We've done both. You know, whether we make a decision the day of or in the near future. So first step, do I have a motion to close the public hearing at this time?
And the record?
And the record. Thank you.
I move the public hearing and the record in this case be closed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion on that? Seen, heard, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have a decision to make whether we want to make a motion. Well, regardless, we're going to make a motion on deciding to either approve or disapprove the request for C2 to C3 or a decision to make that decision at a later date.
Personally, I'd kind of like to wait. I mean, we got a lot of information, more so than we did two weeks ago about this, and I would feel a lot more comfortable having time to review this rather than, you know, just having it handed. And that's no offense to anybody here that, you know, we just got this today. Personally, I would feel a lot more comfortable having the time to.
So I take that as professional as well and you're making a motion?
I will make a motion to, what would the proper way to postpone the decision to?
Not necessarily postpone, but make a decision and schedule it at a near future whether.
Can we just say March 9th? And then everyone knows when the decision will be made, if that's okay?
And I take it March 9th is a Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
Okay.
So I make a motion that the decision date be scheduled on March 9th.
Second.
Second, Dad. A few seconds, is that okay with you?
Yes, thank you.
He took away your motion?
That's okay.
He wrote it for me.
I'm just saying.
Well, you're good at subcontracting.
Is there any, is there any discussion on that? Seen, heard, none. Again, thank you all for all of the information you provided. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I apologize. I've got a plane to catch.
Also, that means Commissioner Kyler's in charge now.
Commissioner Kyler's in charge.
Do we need to do anything to say that he's leaving and I'm now? We just need to do it. So, item six. Public comment on additional fees for construction and administration services related to Charles Carroll Community Center.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Are you actually afternoon?
Good afternoon, yeah, good afternoon.
Carrie from the Office of Procurement is going to introduce our request.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm sorry, good afternoon. The Office of Procurement in conjunction with the Bureau of Building Construction request your approval to increase the contract to Mimar Ponte Melor in the amount of $24,790 to provide for the additional construction administration services related to the Charles Carroll Community Center. This amount is within the adaptive budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kirk Engel, Project Manager with Bureau of Building Construction. With me is John Bowers, Bureau Chief of Building Construction, and also in the back is Deputy Director Eric Burdine. As Carrie had stated, the Bureau of Building Construction is here before you today to request board approval for additional construction administration funds with Mimar Ponte Melor Architects and Engineers LLC. This will allow the architect of record to see the project through final construction, final inspections, and any punchless items that may be created during our final walkthrough. The construction period has exceeded the amount of time which was initially assumed when contracting with the architect. Approval of these funds are necessary to continue the architect of record, Mimar Ponte Melor services through the end of this project. The cost for additional construction administration is $24,979 and this is within project budget. No additional funds are required. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a quick question. So I was reading this and obviously it says that construction periods extended the amount of time that was initially assumed. How far of an extension has this been?
It's been about three, four months.
Three or four months. And are we looking at any potential situations we're going to be extending further past this or is this where we're going to be in this as it?
Not projected at this time. The only thing that has held us back as construction started in last year of March has been supply chain issues.
Understood.
Comp house, generator, things of that sort. So we are very close to actual turnover of this building. We're still constructing as, as we go along each day, but the beginning of April is our projected walkthrough of the building.
Okay, and I was just, I was just curious as to whether we might be, you know, seeing additional extensions on that or not, so. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And, and you set a figure, but I couldn't, and maybe you answered my question, but I'll ask it anyway. What was the original budget for this and what is the total amount going to be spent now? And do you expect any other change orders or is this potentially the last one?
Specifically, Commissioner, is that in respect to general change orders or with respect to the, the consulting side of the project, the architects? Everything? We, as Kirk said, we don't anticipate any additional requests for extensions for the architect or the other consultants on the project team. Being a construction project, there are things that do happen over time that are unplanned, unexpected, unanticipated. But as we're nearing the completion of the project, our expectation for any future potential change orders is fairly minimal. If that's a fair statement.
There are none pending right now that you know of and doesn't, and, and I knew you're near the end, so you, I wouldn't ask us in the middle of the job. I've been on the other side of the fence. We always want change orders. But, so you're saying you think no more. Do you know the, you have any idea of the total budget now of this job?
Do you have that figure handy, Kirk?
If not, that's.
Yeah, total contract to date is 5.7, 5,758,000.
Am I, did we say that again?
5,758,000.
That is, that is just the construction budget. The, I don't have the actual overall budget. It's, it's 7 point something million.
7.2, that's what I thought, yeah. 7.2 is the overall, is the total. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
And to maybe, maybe address your, your question a little further. Every project, we do anticipate construction change orders on, as you know. And so between construction change orders and the architect change order that we've got in front of you today and additional costs that we have as the owner such as buying the furniture, buy, you know, audiovisual, tons of things that go into a construction project that the owner, us as Carroll County, as the owners represented pay for. We hold a 10% contingency on that budget when we, when we come to you to approve a project like this. We're well within that budget. We believe we will be giving money back at the end of this project.
Thanks. And I probably didn't ask a good question.
Commissioner, I would like to point out, there is a typo on the briefing paper, the actual amount, and I just checked the quote, is $24,979, not $24,790.
So it's 970, is it?
It's $24,979.
$79.
Seventy-nine.
979.
And can I?
Any other questions?
Can I, can I ask you a little bit more about this specifically and forgive me if I'm somewhat naive about this? So I, you know, I worked for years doing home improvement work with my dad and, and, you know, we would go to a job and, you know, Home Depot or some place didn't have something, right? We wouldn't just go to the job and, and, you know, do nothing and think we would get paid for it. We would go do something else. So I guess my, my question is, is given that there were supply chain issues which necessitated that, that delay in construction, where is this money being used? I mean, what is this? How is this coming into effect? Why is this the case that, that, you know, that supply chain necessitates the additional money?
So, good question. It has, it has delayed the construction period and so if you understand, we, we have hired this architect well before we knew what the construction period was going to be. So we had a certain amount that we thought, a certain amount of many months that we thought the construction was going to take place. So that's what we hired the architect to do, that, that certain amount. Since the project was bid by the contractor, we found, okay, well, they've already, they've already anticipated that. There's nothing, there's nothing going on. There's still construction going on. The, the general contractor isn't hitting us with any additional weeks. He has planned for that, so I guess that's the difference. We had to assume what the construction period was going to be with the architect before we knew there was ever going to be supply chains, supply chain issues.
So this change is all for the architect for managing the project that lasted long?
That's correct.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
It, it does, but again, I, again, and please forgive me again if I'm just not, so again, if I'm the architect and there is the delay that's happening and my construction crews aren't working, I am still getting paid even though they're not working. Am I getting that right or what's?
You're not. The, the construction crews have been working the entire time.
Okay, despite the supply chain issues?
That's correct. There's been other, there's been plenty of other things to do and they've kept going.
They just changed what they were doing? Okay, alright.
And, and the contractor recognized that before we even hired him, that he had an extended period of time that he was going to be constructing the project. Unfortunately, we didn't anticipate that when we hired the architect.
Alright, thank you very, now, now that makes sense.
Right, so the architect still shows up at the meetings every week on a, on an extended construction period. Not every week, we do it bi-week, I mean, I'm sorry.
No, no, now it makes sense. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
I think I'm good.
Motion to award the increase to the contract to the Charles Carroll Community Center to, and Mimar Ponte Melor, did I say that right?
Yes. Yes.
In the amount of $24,979.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time this afternoon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, public, possible nuisance ordinance, and Commissioner Gordon?
Yes, thank you. So, technically we left a word out, but it would technically should be possible, it should be a nuisance establishment ordinance. But one of the challenges we've been having significantly in the last couple of years is our law enforcement being heavily utilized to deal with businesses and having to make multiple, multiple calls. I have a, an email I want to read to all of you from Sheriff Dewey regarding this topic. And he says, quote, "Over the past several years, we've seen a measurable uptick in calls for service at several area retail stores and hotels and motels. From theft to drug activity, certain establishments are accounting for half of the calls of service in some areas of the county. For example, one patrol area in December of 2022 had two retail stores that accounted for 54% of all the calls of service in that entire patrol area, which covers approximately 40 square miles. We've also been experiencing narcotics distribution, drug overdoses, and other related criminal activity at area hotels and motels where significant resources from the sheriff's department, state police, and Westminster Police Department are used on a daily basis to combat this. Several of these establishments have turned a blind eye on the issue while others are hampered by corporate policies that keep store managers from being more proactive to stop theft and other criminal activity." And it continues on, "This statement, this ordinance would give law enforcement and prosecutors another tool and the ability to address those that turn a blind eye on criminal activity and large corporations that put profits over the safety of their employees and law-abiding customers shopping at these establishments." For this reason, I wanted to bring this up this morning. And I'd like to move that the Board of County Commissioners direct county attorney to consult with county sheriff and state's attorney to determine if local legislation is warranted and how it can be affected in addressing this problem to abate nuisance-based law and law enforcement calls regarding these types of premises.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Could you describe to us, if we pass this, what's the potential process? I mean, this would include a public hearing and a lot of items, correct?
Yes, if you, if the motion passes, I'll consult with state's attorney's office and the sheriff's office and say, what are you guys looking for? And what can we come up with legally that will, that will address your concerns? We'll then come back to you with a draft of an ordinance and, and say, this is what we come up with. If you like what you see, we'll send it out to a public hearing. It has to be advertised in the newspaper. There'll be a public hearing. People get a chance to comment on it. And at the end of that, you'll, you'll, you'll be asked whether you want to adopt the ordinance or not, so.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I, I commend Commissioner Gordon for taking this initiative. You know, I mean, I've alluded to this before, but, you know, we're, we're in a unique position as a county. We're not the wealthiest county in the state. We're not the poorest county in the state. We've got to find new and innovative ways to move into the future. This is sort of a classy example in my mind of, of the third way that we're going to have to embark on. I think a lot of counties would just turn around and say, well, we need to raise taxes and hire more police. Or some counties that didn't have the resources would just give up. And if we're going to be successful moving into the future, I think it's going to be things like this where we say, hold on a second, we don't have to penalize the entire county. And we're not trying to run people out. We're not trying to run businesses out. But those are some pretty astounding statistics. I mean, clearly the sheriff's department's spending most of their time in the same areas. So why not? Why not take that route? So I appreciate the initiative. I wish it had been my idea, but it wasn't. I wish I'd thought of it.
Commissioner Garen, I completely agree with you and Commissioner Gordon, I commend you as well for this and, you know, this, this, you know, to your point, Commissioner Garen, it's not that you're trying to, to run a business out, but trying to make them be a more responsible member of the community in which they exist, you know? You know, whether you are a resident or whether you are a business, you're part of the fabric of this community. And, you know, you certainly have to take responsibility at some point. And so I think this is a, this is a good step.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'd like to, for the public, the last two votes have been for zero because one member is absent. Now, a question. Since it's 1:15, I assume we're not going to end to close and reconvene at 1:00, so what's the timeframe?
You have a closed legal.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you have a closed for legal advice after?
So we're going to do that now and then will we, when will we reconvene open?
That will be up to the board. We could apologize and ask the folks to come back at a later date. We could pick a time, 2:00, 2:30.
I would suggest apologizing to those who are here to present and say, to come back another time, because I have no idea how long closed legal will end up taking and it would not be fair to them to continue to expect them to wait if we had no idea. So I would just, you know, respectfully say maybe, you know, next week. So I would just, you know, respectfully say maybe, you know, next week.
Everybody agree with that?
I, I concur. I, that is a great, that is a great point.
I, I think that's unfortunately probably the best at this point to do.
And, and so before we, um, adjourn this to go into close, we need to go through the agenda. And, uh, everybody should have it in front of them. Um, Monday, February 20th, uh, 5:00 PM is District 5 Night in Annapolis. Gordon, Kyler, and Vigliotti show is going. And, um, they've invited a lot of people and they do want RSVPs to plan, but, um, I'm sure you could still RSVP if you wanted. Tuesday, Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioner Gordon. 2:00 PM Veterans Advisory Meeting with Commissioners Gordon and Kyler. 7:15, Commissioner Kyler's meeting with Reese Volunteer Fire Company. Wednesday, um, 9:30 AM is Mako. And the plan right now is to do that in Annapolis. Um, Commissioner Kyler and Rusty would be there. Did we get a, an invite to be part of a Parks Advisory Board meeting?
Yes.
Which day was that?
Mar- like March 22nd or so.
Okay, so that's not, that doesn't interfere with his schedule yet.
Not yet.
Thank you.
We'll be there before you know it, but not yet.
Again?
We'll be there before you know it, but not yet.
It'll be quick enough, but not next week. Thursday, February 23rd, 8:00 AM, Board of County Commissioners close administrative. 10:00 AM, Board of County Commissioners open. Item one, um, Department Update Circuit Court. Item two, Legislative Update. Item three, the Ark of Carroll County Department Update. Item four, Carroll County Youth Service Bureau Department Update. Item five, Carroll County Public Schools Department Update. Item six, University of Maryland Extension Department Update. Item seven, Flying Colors of Success Department Update. Item eight, Rape Crisis Intervention Service at Carroll County Department Update. Is there any proposed change to our open meeting?
I would, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this now and again, just being as respectful as possible. I know a lot of the presentations we've been having keep running over. We have, uh, what, eight presentations that morning plus a closed land acquisition session. Then we have the public hearing on the solar moratorium that evening. I would recommend getting rid of it, or not getting rid of, but postponing possibly four of those presentations. Again, knowing that they tend to go over, knowing that they tend to, you know, we tend to ask questions. And again, knowing that we have the, uh, the, the closed session for land acquisition.
And the legislative update too.
And the legislative update too. But we'll keep that, keep that.
Everybody say.
The suggestion makes sense to me. It does look like we've, it is a steep- I, I, I mean, the point being, we just, we are just keeping people waiting sometimes.
I know.
And, uh, that is a great point to bring up. We do have to be respectful of that. I don't know the answer. I don't know how to fix that though, but.
So we could ask, uh, those under items five, six, seven, and eight, uh, to postpone for a week. Um, and obviously, I mean, depending on-
If you don't mind, we'll just move those who are, who are available to, we'll move, we'll only keep it to four, but we'll just see who's, who needs to go next week versus-
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's totally okay, yeah.
Rather than determine which ones.
Right, and then we'll move the, the, obviously the closed portion right up to the, the back of that.
So we'll have four department updates plus legislative.
Correct. And the closed land acquisition.
Yes, and closed acquires, closed land acquisition.
But we'll tell you what, what, we'll, if you don't mind linking it up to us, up to them.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Like, like these guys have said, we've, uh, we seem to make some people wait. So whatever works out best for, for how to fill it in. And 6:00 PM is the public hearing, solar moratorium down in the Reagan Room, Room 03. And we all plan to be there. Friday, Saturday, nothing. Sunday, and I may, I may need to sub some of this as my podcast. Any other changes to that week? Okay, uh, Monday, February 27th, um, Mako, Royal County, 6:30 in the evening. Westminster City Hall, 7:00 PM in the meeting, Commissioner Gordon. Tuesday, uh, former students of Robert Moten reception. 9:00 AM, Wednesday, Mako, and again, uh, Commissioner Rusty now will probably do that in Annapolis. Planning and zoning for Commissioner Gordon at 6:00 PM. Now Thursday, I'm just, I just glanced down the agenda. So 10:00 AM, Board of County Commissioners open session after the 8:00 AM closed administrative. Item one, Legislative Update. Item two, Personal Care Service awarding a vendor. Item three, EMS billing. Item four, Pinch Valley Road closing. Item five, Payment Management Program. Item six, the County NPDES Program and, uh, Permit Department. Any concerns or comments on those six items? And then closed for land acquisition, Friday, Saturday clear. And Sunday is Commissioner Gordon's podcast. Any corrections, changes? We're okay?
Yes.
All good for me, yeah. Thank you.
Now, we need a motion to totally adjourn open session and go into closed?
Yeah, I would make a motion to go to, uh, closed for legal advice first and then a motion to, um, adjourn after the-
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to go into closed, legal advice.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I entertain a motion to adjourn the open meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.